I'll have four more minutes. Three.
Walk amongst yourselves.
That clock is off. I'd like to call it the order, the September 5th meeting of the Clearwater City Council. Apologize to everybody for not having a work session on Tuesday, but I know you all understand why that was called up because of the threatening storm. Appreciate the work on behalf of all of our community that our staff was ready to do and very grateful that we didn't have to call upon y'all and the county and all the other people who were getting ready to deal with that storm. We were truly blessed and give thanks for that and reach out to the people, not only in the Bahamas, but also now it appears to be in the Carolinas. With that, let me ask Pastor Steve Krelloff from the Lakeside Community Church to lead us in an invocation, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Mr. Albritton.
Lord, we come into your presence with Thanksgiving. So many things to be thankful for, but we are thankful for our country. We are thankful that you have placed us in a country where democracy reigns, and, Lord, we thank you that that will be demonstrated even tonight. We pray for our city council members, that you will give them wisdom. Wisdom belongs to you, comes from you. We pray that you will give them insight in everything that comes before them, and we pray that justice might reign and fairness might reign. And, Lord, we are grateful that we can rest in the fact that you have ordained government and you are sovereign over this. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much for being with us. We appreciate it. I'd like to introduce our council members. To my right is Councilmember Jay Poglay.
Good evening.
Councilmember Bob Kundoff.
Hi, folks.
Our city manager, Bill Horn.
Good evening.
And Assistant City Manager Micah Maxwell.
Evening.
To my left, Councilmember Dave Albritton.
Good evening.
Councilmember Hoyt Hamilton.
Good evening.
Our city attorney, Pam Aiken.
Good evening.
And our city clerk, Rose Marie Call.
Good evening.
Let me remind you that if you have a cellphone or other device that goes off, please silence this so that it doesn't interrupt the meeting and cost you a dollar. Let me also remind you that if you're going to speak under Citizens to Be Heard, to please make sure that you have had a card filled out with the clerk so that you can be recognized. With that, our first order of business is to ask Christopher Hubbard to help us do a presentation and recognize our Clearwater Nagano Sister City Exchange students.
Good evening, City Council, city staff, and citizens. I'm proud to have our exchange students from both high school and middle school trips here with us this evening as part of their diligence to the city and the council for supporting the Sister Cities Exchange Program. They have some short presentations and thank yous to sum up their recent trip during the summer to our sister city of Nagano, Japan. Now, we do have one student that is currently out of the country right now. She's actually in another student exchange program. She's very prolific. She is, was at a coding camp at the time, so if I can read this, we do have a video that we can share with our citizens on the Facebook page, but this is what she has said. She says, "Good evening. My name is Hannah Joseph. I'm sorry that I can't be here. I'm still at a coding camp in Seattle, but I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to go to Japan. I really enjoyed learning about Japanese culture and about all the traditional Japanese activities like onsen and the tea ceremony. I am also thankful for the gifts given to me, especially by my Japanese host family. My Japanese grandmother made handmade sandals for me and my grandmother and my sister and I, and my host mom and dad and sisters made a special photo album of a collection of photos of my stay there, of me and them and activities that we've done together. My host family was so warm and welcoming, and I miss them, and I really hope that my family and I are able to return the favor and that they can stay with us and we can show them around Clearwater. Thank you for your time, and once again, thank you for the opportunity to go to Japan." We have two of the other high school students, and then we have the middle school students from the Clearwater Sister Cities, Inc. Citizens Group. So I'll go ahead and invite Grace Anna and Jace up to the dais. And we have Jace Anna's presentation.
The reason in the first place I was intrigued to go to Japan was the culture. In my essay, I talked about how I'm jaded. I see beaches and sunshine every day. It was time for a new page turn in my life, and it was nothing at all like how I expected it to be. Sure, I expected beauty, but none like how I saw. The people, the scenery, everything, everything was like a dream come true. Japan is the most clean place you'll ever be. And don't get me started on the beauty of the people. Every single person I met on my trip was so kind, so wise, and greeted me with open arms. The culture is beautiful and abundant with respect. You truly cannot imagine it unless you've been there. It was an entirely new world. I wouldn't give up the experience for anything, and I thank my host family, my peers, and my adult role models for helping me mature along the entire process and gain wisdom that will last me a lifetime. I hope one day I can go back, and if anything, it made me realize there is a world outside of my everyday life, and I hope to travel the entirety of it someday soon. I'd like to thank the city council for this amazing and priceless opportunity. It definitely changed me for the better. And I have three photos. I was just informed. This first photo here is a picture of me and my host family, the mother, the father, and the father's parents. The second photo is my host family and I when they took me to a place literally above the clouds. We went up into the mountains, and as you looked over into the mountains, the clouds are below you, which is something you don't see every day. And this last photo is at the sports festival in the gym at the school, and we played tug of war, and we won. And it took my entire body strength, because obviously I don't have very big arms. And this last one, this was a yukata, a summer Japanese traditional outfit, and it was very heavy, is all I can say, but the opportunity of a lifetime. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, City of Clearwater, for allowing me to go to Japan and giving me a chance to build an unbreakable bond between me and my new family in Japan. My friends and memories I have during the school festival will always have a huge impact on my life, and my family already said I can go back there with my sister who went last year, and I can come live with them back in Japan. This is the first day I met them at the school. This is my mom and my two twin sisters, Ma and Hina. This was during the middle school English class. We went around and they asked us questions in English, of course, because they have to learn it, and their English is really good, better than I expected, but they were kind of shy. Well, not this group, obviously, because they're posing like me, but they were so fun to be around. This is my auntie and my grandpa at the house, because I live with seven of them in one house, and then in the other house on the same property was four more. Yeah, four more. So really big family. They're super nice, super funny. We always laughed and did funny stuff like peace signs. We even did an arm wrestle against grandpa. This was a different math, or no, English class, yeah. Still, kids were fun, shy, just getting them to break out because, just get them used to Americans and because more people are going to keep coming to their school. And this is at the sports festival. So my class had won the tug of war championship, so another class had asked me to come and join them, but sadly, I was so tired and we lost to Grace's class. Thank you.
Well, Grace and Jace, come up here so that we can at least shake your hands before y'all, you know, and thank y'all for participating. Welcome back. Watch your step. Watch your step.
Counsel, also, we have some, a short presentation by Jonathan Hagerty, who participated in the middle school exchange, as well as some speeches by the middle school exchange students. Before we go on, though, I did want to thank the council for their continued support of the program. We're going into our 60th anniversary of exchange with Nagano, Japan. It's one of the longest-running exchanges in the entire country, the program having only started in 1956, when our program started in 1959, so it is quite a long-running program. Also, I want to thank our partners with the Pinellas County School Board, especially Ms. Pam Benton, who chaperoned our high school students on this most recent trip to Japan. And I'd also like to recognize the Clearwater Sister Cities, Inc. Citizens Group, who put a lot of love and effort into getting our middle school students ready and traveling over to Japan, and they have a number of Japanese-focused activities throughout the year. So I'll invite Jonathan and the other middle school students up to the dais.
Hello. My name is Brittany Hardy. I'm one of the chaperones.
Use the mic. You have to stand.
Right here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. My name is Brittany Hardy. I am one of the chaperones for the Clearwater Sister Cities Cultural Exchange Program in Nagano. I'm actually the new kid, I'm the newest one. This is our lead chaperone, James Wallace, and these are two of our students, Lucy Stricklet and Ifa Peterson, that were able to attend, and our other chaperone, Veronica Liao. Our third chaperone, who actually created this lovely presentation we're going to give to you today, is with us in spirit. He was overwhelmed by traffic on 19 and is currently stuck there, so hopefully he'll be able to join us momentarily.
Okay, so I'm Lucy, as you may have heard. So we had the honor of learning and sharing culture at Seibu Junior High, a smaller school in Nagano with about 200 students, so a very small school, but when we first arrived, we participated in various team-building activities with our new classmates, which gave us the chance to see how much we have in common. Our regular school day was filled with a vibrant curriculum such as science, math, language acquisition, and even PE. It was interesting to see the various layouts of the classrooms and experience hands-on learning in the Japanese school. After our regular schedule, our after-school time was busy with many different activities. My favorite activities were art and the flower arrangement, because it was fun to get an assignment that was on, like, hands-on and really interacting with the students and showing off my creativity.
Peterson. In Nagano, we spent time with Japanese students learning subjects like science. We also had the opportunity to participate in cultural exchange activities such as the art of ikura, which is calligraphy, or the Japanese flower arrangement. During our travels, we often met Japanese students at temples and helped promote English by practicing with them. It was a lot of fun. We learned that in Japanese schools, students work as a team to serve lunch to one another and eat in a classroom. They eat a variety of foods, including curry, salads, and smoked fish, all very healthy and student-made. They often play games in order to win extra food items for each other, which is really fun and cool to watch. After eating, students clean up their own dishes and desk before returning to their studies and the class.
Hi, I'm Jonathan. I go to Carwise Middle School, and yeah. This school only had 166 kids, so it felt like a really big family. My schedule at the Seibu Junior High School was filled with a lot of activities. We went to calligraphy and kite-making and flower arrangement, and it was very fun when I went with my host brother when he had to go to basketball practice, so he was really fun.
All right. We'll get tag teams a little bit quick. As we wrap up, I just want to look at this photo. These are all the host families and everyone on the Nagano side who has made this program successful. As we celebrate the 60th anniversary, the city of Nagano is super excited about their trip to Clearwater and this continuous program, so it's really a memory forever for all these students as they become global citizens and more diverse as they grow. And I also want to point out the highlight of our trip is that most of our students here have now taken programs in their schools for multicultural club, Japanese club, origami. Even one of your student representatives, Lucas Girardi Smith, has become the selected for the advisory board. So our program has made an impact on the community. There's one mention that, and thank you for your support.
Counsel, I'm going to call forward Lisa Walls from Care Fest to come forward for a proclamation. Whereas Care Fest is a community service day that transforms the community through acts of caring and kindness, and whereas the objective of Care Fest 2019 is to mobilize local businesses, churches, and social agencies to work together to meet the needs of citizens within the various communities of Tampa Bay, and whereas on September 28th, Care Fest Day 2019, community members will volunteer to restore and to beautify homes and areas of Clearwater in an attempt to win the Care Cup as the most caring community. Now, therefore, I, George Kretikas, Mayor of the City of Clearwater, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim September 28th, 2019, to be Care Fest Day in the City of Clearwater, and invite all of our citizens to join in these efforts of service in our community. Thank you very much for all the work and all the volunteers. Counsel, are there any addition or corrections to the minutes of August the 14th?
Will you approve?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of August the 14th. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to an item that is not on the agenda of tonight's council meeting? If so, please come forward. Make sure that you have a card that's filled out, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Kretikas, and good evening, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Tom Nussera. I live at 3173 Drew Street. That's next to the last house on Drew Street down by Tampa Bay. I want to talk about that first, but I've got something more important to bring up second. So first thing is, I want to thank Dr. Kundoff for mentioning to the city council publicly about my summer job 50 years ago at Candy Space Center when I became the youngest member of the launch crew for Apollo 11. I learned a lot from that experience, and I thank you for bringing it up with everyone. What I learned had to do with teamwork, having a clear vision, and the experience that, you know, as Americans, we can do anything, you know? We just have to have, you know, that focus on what it is we want to accomplish. That said, a couple weeks ago, or several weeks ago, someone came by, knocked on my door, and he had a petition, and he was petitioning to have speed humps or speed bumps put on Drew Street. That's the section of Drew Street between McMullen Booth Road and Bay Shore. He had obtained a traffic study through the city and showed me the study, and, you know, some cars go too fast and maybe more cars go too fast than should, but also as a resident there for, you know, since 1994, and also since being familiar with that stretch of road all the way back to when it was crushed shell, you know, back in the 60s, when I was going to St. Petersburg Junior College further up on Drew Street. Cars, that's always been the speed limit, and it's rarely enforced, but it's also not problematic from the standpoint of accidents. In all the years I've lived there, I've only seen one accident when someone went off the road and into the ditch. The concern the neighbor had after I started asking him questions had to do with the noise. He lives up at the far end up on McMullen Booth Road, and he thought that maybe by slowing down traffic, it would make his situation less noisy. Bottom line on it is, this is not really a neighborhood. It's both people that live in unincorporated Pinellas County and a few homes that are actually in the city. It's not really a true neighborhood, and this is an artery. This is a special artery. It's a scenic road, actually, as you go down the hill to Tampa Bay, and it's, in my opinion, not appropriate for speed humps to be there, but it would be appropriate for either additional enforcement or, you know, serious enforcement of the 25 mile an hour speed limit, or alternatively, these new radar signs, which are effective on the other end of Drew Street as we come to work.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to an item not on the agenda?
Good evening. My name is Paul Gollion.
Do you fill out a card?
Yeah. And I'm here to speak about the Clearwater Air Park. You all got another letter from me, and very simply, I'm here for the same reason you all here. We all have a role in our government. You all have a very specific role. I'm just a citizen, and as such, that to some extent means that my job is to make sure you all are doing your job. And as annoying as it may be, that's what I've been doing. I met with both Mr. Horn and Pam Akins, and they both directed me on a route to this, and when it didn't seem that anything was really taking place effective, I decided to speak to you all about this and write you all about this. I still think that's the problem. The air park is a very important part of Clearwater. I'm not actually a resident of Clearwater, so I can't vote for any of you all or against any of you all, but I still believe very strongly that there's matters there that need to be dealt with. Mr. Horn correctly told me when I met with him that perhaps I should have come forward sooner. Perhaps that's true, but I waited very specifically for a reason. I waited until a police report on the activities at the air park had became public. And once it became public, I didn't feel like I'd be speaking with hearsay or just rumors, but would I be able to address the problems at the air park the way the police in their investigation determined them to be? And as you all know, I've quoted from that police report numerous times. I've been told by Mr. King's attorney that these statements are slanderous to him, and maybe he considers them to be that way, but I can't do anything about that. I'm here representing a lot of people who are at that air park, who for also for reasons stated in that police report are not comfortable coming before you all. It's sad that that's the case, but that is the case. That's the statement they made to the police, to two different detectives. So that's the situation. It still stands that way. I did make some observations in the letter about the new guard post that's being constructed at the air park. I don't think that it's going to be an effective device in the end. It kind of serves a very minor problem, and it creates some other substantial problems. I can't really speak publicly about safety issues. Ed Chesney knows, you're Director of Marine and Aviation, how inappropriate it was to bring these matters out before the public. Airport security is supposed to be one of the things that's not a public matter for obvious reasons, and if anybody wants to know what some of those suggestions are, I've discussed them with the Florida Department of Transportation.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Thanks.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to an item not on the agenda?
Okay, hi. Hello. I am Hannah's mom, Christina Joseph, and right now, as, we're good? Okay, good. As mentioned, she's en route to Taiwan to begin her Rotary Youth Exchange Program. Unfortunately, it's your video, but I just wanted to, two things. First thing, just wanted to thank you, extended on her behalf. We've talked at length about how grateful she is to have had the experience, not only as a student advisory, student ambassador on the advisory board for the Clearwater Sister Cities Program, but also to have gone to Japan as one of the student ambassadors. And even with Dorian that just happened, her host sisters were making sure she was okay, and it's just so many special, like, you know, connections. So then the second thing is, this is Lynn. She is the, so my daughter's gone out as the, for the Rotary Club of Clearwater Rotary Youth Exchange student to Taiwan, and so this is Lynn, and she is the inbound student for the Rotary Club of Clearwater from Taiwan, and she, Thailand, I'm sorry, Thailand, mine's in Taiwan, yes, and so she just wanted to say one or two words.
Hi, I'm Lynn from Thailand. I'm in Rotary Club of Clearwater. This is my first time in the United States. Everything is super nice. Thank you for having me here. I'm so glad and really happy to be here in Clearwater. Thank you.
Welcome, welcome. Thank y'all. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to an item not on the agenda?
Good evening.
Do you have to fill out a card?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Marcel Moseni. I'm going to utilize my three minutes out here about connecting to the city sewer line that is available in the Idarwild project, and I have assisted Mr. Horn and Mayor about some of the frustration I've had, and I've been dealing with some of the folks out there. In the first handout that you have out there, I want to show you where this property is. This is a rental property. It's 1309 Union Street, and initially, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, I came to the city, went to engineering department. They said we need to go to the planning and look at the ATA, and then I contacted planning and staff. They said, no, you need to go to engineering. So I was a little bit frustrated, and... So, I was a little bit frustrated, and from that point of view, I CC'd some of my emails to Mayor and Mr. Horn, and the question became, you know, do I need to pay 900 impact fees, sewer connection impact fee, or 1800? They didn't know what it needs to be paid, and I still... Well, I know, I do know. And then, at the same time, I came across the fact that the property just directly south of me on 2080... 80 Point 7, they had their connection back in 2016, and by physically inspecting it, it appeared that it had only one cleanup tab and connecting to the one city cleanup tab. But on the 1309, there's two cleanup tab, and I talked into the city engineering staff. They said I have to connect to two city. Economically, this, it doesn't make sense. Basically, we are comparing apple with apples out here, and I am being asked to connect to two cleanup tabs instead of one where the other property has connected to. That's one point that I like to raise, and the second point that I like to raise is about the annexation policy in the city. This annexation policy that it is under books, it is disincentive, it is not, does not encourage property owners within the unincorporated area to annex to the city. It is totally in the opposite of City of Largo forced annexation policy ten, fifteen years ago.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to an item not on the agenda? If not, I will close public comment and move on to Agenda Item 7.1. We don't have anything on consent tonight since we did not have a work session, so we will go through each item individually. Agenda Item 7.1, Mr. Horn.
Set final millage of 5.9550 mills for fiscal year 2019-2020 against non-exempt real and personal property within the city of Clearwater and pass ordinance number 9322-19 on first reading. Ms. Castle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kayleen Castle, Budget Manager. This is the first of two statutorily required public hearings to finalize the fiscal year 2019-20 operating and capital improvement budget. For the benefit of the residents present or watching, I have a presentation which gives an overview of the budget you are approving. The 2019-20 proposed budget for all city operating funds, the special revenue funds and capital improvement fund is $542,194,290. This reflects a 1% decrease from the 2018-19 amended total city budget. This slide shows a breakdown of that total by fund type and percentage change in comparison to the current year amended budget. The total general fund budget for fiscal year 20 is $151,993,200, which is a 1% increase. The total of utility funds, which includes the budget for water and sewer, storm water, gas, and solid waste and recycling operations reflects a 1% increase from the fiscal year 19 amended budget. The enterprise fund totals, which includes the budget for our marine, air park, Clearwater Harbor Marina and parking operations is budgeted at a 5% increase, and the budget for internal service funds, which include information technology, utility customer service, building and maintenance, fleet and radio communications, and the central insurance fund is projected at a decrease of less than 1% in fiscal year 20. Special revenue funds also reflect a decrease of less than 1% from the current year amended budget, and finally, the capital improvement fund reflects an 8% decrease from the fiscal year 19 amended budget. This chart represents the change in property values over the last 12 years. Our 2019 certified values received from the Pinellas County Property Appraiser reflect an increase in property values of approximately 6.8% from $11.2 billion in 2018 to $11.9 billion. As of last year, the total property values in Clearwater have fully recovered from recessionary years, and we are now experiencing new growth. The proposed millage rate of 5.9550 mills was recommended by the city manager and approved in July as the tentative millage rate for the fiscal year 2019-20 budget. This is the same rate as levied in the current year. Due to value growth, this proposed rate is 6.01% greater than the rolled back rate, or what we typically refer to as the revenue neutral rate. The rolled back rate is the millage rate that would provide the city with the same property tax revenue as was received in the prior year. Using the proposed millage rate, property tax revenues are projected to be 68.2 million in fiscal year 20. This represents an increase of approximately 4.4 million, or 6.8% over the fiscal year 19 budget. Of that 68.2 million projected, approximately 64.9 million will support general fund operations, and 3.2 million represents the road millage used for maintenance of city streets. Revenues that support general fund operations reflect a net increase of 1% from fiscal year 2019 amended revenues. As discussed in the previous slide, ad valorem tax revenues are budgeted at approximately 64.9 million, which is almost a 7% increase from the current budget. This is the largest source of revenue for the general fund, accounting for approximately 42% of total general fund revenue. All other general fund revenues are listed on this slide, showing the projected change in comparison to the current year's amended budget. This chart shows the general fund expenditure budget by department. The budget for public safety is approximately 48.5% of the total general fund budget, with the police department representing 29.5% and the fire department representing 19% of that total. The budget for parks and recreation reflects 21% of the total general fund budget, and as a reminder, parks and recreation also includes citywide groundscape, grands... I'm sorry. Grounds and landscape maintenance, urban forestry, streets and sidewalk maintenance, as well as the operations of Pier 60 and the sailing center. The budget for non-departmental represents 7% of the total budget, and this is a decrease of 10% from the current year's total because of the funding for Crest Lake Park. All departments represented on this slide represent approximately the same or a slight increase in comparison to the prior year. This chart represents the total general fund budget by category. Personnel costs continue to be our largest expense at 62% of total, which is the same percentage of total as the current year. Operating expenditures represent the next largest category at approximately 15% of total budget. Internal service charges are 13% of total. The budget for inter-fund transfers represents 9% of the total general fund budget, and debt and capital expenditures combined represent approximately 1% of the total general fund A total of 1,836.6 full-time equivalent positions are proposed across all funds for fiscal year 20. This is an increase of two FTEs from the 2019 amended budget. This is a net increase of one FTE in the general fund for the addition of a construction inspector in engineering and a police information technician, offset by the elimination of one fire medic position. Enterprise fund FTEs are increased by the addition of one marine facility operator position to cover increased staffing needs at the Clearwater Harbor Marina and the soon-to-be reopened Seminole Street boat ramp. In this graph, the sand-colored portion represents general fund FTEs, which are budgeted at 1,101.6 positions for fiscal year 20, and the green portion, representing all other operating funds, are budgeted at 735 FTEs for fiscal year 20. This slide represents the categorical breakdown of the capital improvement budget for fiscal year 20. Funding of projects for utilities, which includes storm water, water and sewer, gas, and solid waste and recycling, is planned at 55.7 million, and this continues to be our largest expense at approximately 59% of the total capital improvement budget. General Government...
Excuse me one second. Again, let me ask you to please turn off your cellphone or other device that goes off.
Sorry. Who do I give the dog to?
General Government projects are estimated at 27.6 million, which represents 29% of total capital funding. This includes projects for police, fire, streets, sidewalks, parks and recreation facilities, libraries, and maintenance of city buildings and facilities that operate general government functions. Projects in support of internal service operations are planned at 10.5 million, or 11% of total capital funding. These projects support fleet, radio communications, general services, information technology, and utility customer service. The capital budget for small enterprise funds is estimated at 1.3 million for fiscal year 20 to provide funding for capital repair and maintenance of air park, both marinas, and parking facilities. The Save Our Homes cap for this year is 1.9%. With this cap, the assessed values of homesteaded properties cannot increase above 1.9%. This is an example of city taxes on a homesteaded property in Clearwater, and as a reminder, taxable value is the value after all exemptions. On a home with a 2018 taxable value of $100,000, the growth for tax purposes would be an increase of $1,900 for a new taxable value of $101,900. In this example, city taxes would increase by $11.31. Trim notices were mailed to residents in August, which show an estimate of total property taxes for the year based on all agencies' proposed millage rates. This slide presents the breakdown of that total tax bill. Approximately 32% of the total bill in Clearwater is... 32% supports the Pinellas County School Board, 30% is in support of Pinellas County government operations, and the city's portion is 29% of this total, and 9% to support all other taxing agencies. Tonight is our first public hearing, and the second hearing to adopt the budget will be on Thursday, September 19th, beginning at 6:00 PM. This item is for the first reading of the millage ordinance to adopt a millage rate of 5.9550 mills to support the operating and capital improvement budgets for fiscal year 2019-20, and that rate is the same as the current year.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 7.1? Ms. Castle, explain again. You said that the taxes would be $600, $606.81, an increase of $11, but I got my trim notice and my taxes went up by $300, or... So, where's the difference?
Well, this is just on $100,000 of taxable value, so of course, that would change based on your...
My question wasn't good for you. It wasn't right. The total tax bill that you got on your trim notice, the city of Clearwater doesn't get all of that.
It does not. So, this slide is representation of that total tax bill. The green portion is the city's portion, 29%, so less than one-third of the total tax bill is for city operations.
Right. So, basically, what you're saying is that for every $100,000, your taxes in the city of Clearwater would have gone up 11 dollars?
Correct.
Right, okay. Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 7.1? Motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 7.1. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 7.1. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9322-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida declaring the millage rate to be levied for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020. For operating purposes, including the funding of pensions, debt service, road maintenance for capital improvement expenditures at 5.9550 mills, providing an effective date, the levy of 5.9550 mills constitutes a 6.01% increase from the rolled back rate of 5.6176 mills, whereas the estimated revenue to be received by the city for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020, from ad valorem taxes, $68,158,710, and whereas based on taxable value provided by Pinellas County Property Appraiser, 5.9550 mills are necessary to generate $68,158,710. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Clearwater, Florida, it is hereby determined that a tax of 5.9550 mills against the non-exempt real and personal property within the city is necessary to raise the sums to be appropriated for operation purposes, including pensions, debt service, and road capital improvement projects for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019. Section 2, the levy of 5.9550 mills constitutes a 6.01% increase from the rolled back rate. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect October 1, 2019.
I move that we pass ordinance 9322-19 on first reading. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9322-19 on first reading. Comments, counsel? Ms. Aiken, explain why you read the whole ordinance when normally you don't...
This is the only ordinance that you will see where we are required by statute to read the entire ordinance. Others, we read the title. This one is a statutory requirement.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9322-19 on first reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. We will have the second and final reading on this on our meeting, which will be September the 19th. Agenda Item 7.2, Mr. Horn.
Approve the city of Clearwater annual operating budget for the 2019-2020 fiscal year and pass ordinance number 9323-19 on first reading. Ms. Castle, again.
This is for the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the operating budget for fiscal year 2019-20. No changes have been made to the preliminary budget that was presented in July.
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 7.2? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 7.2?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 7.2.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 7.2. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Miss Call.
Ordinance number 9323-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida adopting an operating budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020. Authorizing the city manager to issue such instructions that are necessary to achieve and accomplish the service programs so authorized. Authorizing the city manager to transfer monies and programs among the departments and activities within any fund as provided by Chapter 2 of the Clearwater Code of Ordinances providing an effective date.
I move to pass ordinance 9323-19 on first reading. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9323-19 on first reading. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 7.3, Mr. Horn.
Approve the fiscal year 2019-2020 annual capital improvement budget. Establish a six-year plan for the capital improvement program, CIP, and pass the ordinance number 9324-19 on first reading. Ms. Castle, again.
This is for the first reading of the ordinance to adopt the capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2019-20. No changes have been made to the preliminary 2019-20 capital improvement fund budget.
Any questions of staff on 7.3? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 7.3?
Move approval of Agenda Item 7.3. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 7.3. Comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9324-19, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida adopting the capital improvement program budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2019, and ending September 30, 2020. Approving the six-year capital improvement program, which shall be reevaluated at the beginning of each fiscal year. Authorizing the city manager to issue such instructions that are necessary to achieve and accomplish the capital permits so authorized. Authorizing the city manager to transfer money between projects in the capital improvement program, appropriating available and anticipated resources for the projects identified, providing an effective date.
I move to pass ordinance 9324-19 on first reading. Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to pass ordinance 9324-19... Motion has been made and seconded to pass Ordinance 9324-19 on first reading. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 7.4, Mr. Horne.
Approve the recommended Penny for Pinellas project list as revised for fiscal years 2019, 2020 through 2029, 2030. Ms. Castle.
This is the annual public hearing to approve the Penny for Pinellas project list for fiscal year 2019-20 through fiscal year 2029-30. City ordinance requires us to hold a public hearing prior to the adoption of the capital improvement budget to discuss the use of Penny for Pinellas tax, and at any time in which there is a proposed change to the Penny for Pinellas project funding of $500,000 or more. For fiscal year 20, includes the final year of funding for Penny III projects, and marks the start of funding for the fourth cycle of Penny, which was approved by voters in 2017. Changes to the approved Penny project list proposed in the fiscal year 20 capital budget reflect a net increase of $1 million. The following projects reflect changes in funding amounts and/or a change in timeline. The Aviation Operations Center project, which provides funding for a replacement of the airpark operations center, is being postponed from fiscal year 20 to fiscal year 23. In the Fire Engines Ladder Truck Replacement Project, the replacement schedule for fire ladder trucks is being changed to advance the planned replacement from fiscal year 21 to fiscal year 20, and eliminate the replacement in fiscal year 23, which is not needed due to the life cycle of current ladder trucks. The funding for fire engine replacements are being changed to postpone fiscal year 20's truck purchase to fiscal year 21, and add an engine replacement in fiscal year 23, reallocating funding from the ladder truck that was eliminated. This project in total is being reduced by $1 million due to the elimination of that ladder truck. The Police District 3 Countryside Substation Project, which provides for construction of replacement patrol operations and training facilities at the Countryside Substation, is being increased by $6 million. The Waterfront Bluff Master Plan, Imagine Clearwater Project, which provides funding for the revitalization project for downtown Clearwater Waterfront and Coachman Park, is being increased by $6,500,000. The Downtown Parking Garage Project, budgeted at a total of $10,500,000, planned for fiscal years 25, 26, and 26, 27, is being eliminated from the Penny for Pinellas project list. Funding will instead be provided by parking revenues, reallocating Penny for Pinellas revenues to fund other projects. And the remaining Penny III funding of $260,000 in the Neighborhood Parks Renovations Project is being transferred to the Ed Wright Park Renovations Project to provide additional funding needed to complete park renovations.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 7.4? This is basically the same discussion that we had at our work session last month, right?
Yes.
Right, okay. Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 7.4?
I move to approve Agenda Item 7.4.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 7.4. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Horne, thank you, and to you and to the staff on working on our budget and our Penny for Pinellas list. It's always a difficult time to be able to have to balance a budget, but we have to balance our budget every year, and you and the staff do a good job. And I know on behalf of all of our citizens, thanks to the staff for the work that they do throughout the year from all of us.
Thank you, ma'am.
Agenda Item 7.5.
Provide direction on the proposed first amendment to an existing hotel development agreement between Decade Sea Captain LLC, the property owner, and the City of Clearwater for property located at 40 Devon Drive, which replaces Exhibit A to provide an updated legal description, and replaces Exhibit B to provide new conceptual site plans and elevations. Reduce the overall height of the proposed hotel building, add a detached dwelling to the portion of the property within the low-medium-density residential district, and sets a new date by which time site plan approval must be obtained, and confirm a second public hearing in city council chambers before city council on September 19, 2019, at 6:00 PM, or as soon thereafter as may be heard. Mr. Perry.
Thank you, Mark Perry, Planning and Development. This is an amendment to an existing development agreement. The entire site is .831 acres. The reason that they are coming back to you to amend the site plan is that the site consists of two zoning districts. The tourist zoning district, which consists of, which the site has .659 acres, and then on the southeast portion of the site, it's a different zoning district. It's a low-medium-density residential. When this project was first approved under the current valid development agreement and its subsequent flexible development approval, all of the intensity of use for the hotel was based on just that portion of the site that's within the tourist zoning district. And that portion of the site is also subject to the Beach by Design overlay district. So what they're looking to do now is, basically, they want to put a single-family home on the portion of the site that's within the low-medium-density residential district. Single-family home is a listed permitted use, but the reason that we need to go through this process is because the site plan's changing. And that site plan overall is Exhibit B of the development agreement. So they have no choice. If they're changing the site plan to add one more, one dwelling unit, not one more, but just one dwelling unit, even though it's a listed permitted use in the LMDR zoning district, they need to update the entire site plan. I mentioned the fact that the tourist portion of the site is subject to Beach by Design. That's important to keep in mind because the portion of the site that's in low-medium-density residential is not subject to Beach by Design. Even though it's one piece of property, a portion of it is outside the Beach by Design planning area, so the design guidelines don't apply, you know, or any of that. The proposal is to maintain the hotel development as approved with some minor modifications. There was a minor amendment that was approved administratively late last year, and that was due to a peripherally related parking garage that was approved across the street. The hotel building has been lowered from right about 100 feet to about 77 feet because a lot of the parking spaces that were going to be placed on the first several floors of that hotel are now going to be located in a new parking garage across the street. There were some minor architectural changes that were deemed to be minor, but all of those changes, of course, since we're updating the development agreement, they're all included with this amendment. The changes to the development agreement are pretty much limited to noting the addition of one detached dwelling. It notes the decrease in height of the hotel from 100 feet to 77 feet. Provides some clarification that the intensity of use for the hotel on the tourist portion of the site is germane to that portion of the site only, and that there wasn't a mixing of intensity of uses or anything like that. The residential component, that portion of the site meets Community Development Code requirements with regard to minimum lot area and width, setbacks, height, required parking, et cetera. As I mentioned, there's no need for consistency with Beach by Design because the LMDR portion of the site isn't within the Beach by Design planning area. It's important to note that there are no changes to the number of allocated units, 66 units, to the hotel. None of that has changed. This is really just to allow a single-family home in the low-medium-density residential portion of the site. If there are any questions, I'd like to try to answer them.
Mr. Roberton. Which lot is the LMDR lot? Is it Lot 3 or Lot 2? It says not included on Lot 3, but I assume that that's the, is that outside of the original? This is on the original survey. It's so small, I can hardly...
I can, I have a map I can show you. So the image on, well, my left, anyway, this is the entire parcel, and on the right, I turned on the zoning districts, and you can see that this is one parcel, and the east portion, this is the yellow, is the low-medium-density portion of the site.
Okay, so...
It's one parcel, one parcel ID number.
I got you.
Yeah.
Okay. Just unclear what that was.
Any other questions, counsel? Mr. Perry, explain again, because I, go ahead and leave that up. So on the yellow portion, it's going to be a separate unit or a separate building?
Yes, it's a separate building, a detached dwelling, a single-family home.
It's going to be a single-family home?
Correct. That's the primary use that's permitted in the LMDR zoning district.
And what is there now?
Right now, there's nothing, the only thing on the entire site is dirt and some remnants...
Right, I'm sorry, before they tore down, it was called the Sea Captain, I believe?
I believe there is surface parking, and if you go there today, you can still see it's kind of surface parking, it's broken up, but that's where the parking lot was.
Okay. And to what would be the south, then, where it's more solid, yes, is that a single-family residences there now?
Yes.
So we're not changing anything, there will be another single-family resident abutting to a single-family resident?
Exactly right.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to clarify there. Now, you also said because it's not under Beach by Design, there are no guidelines that have to be followed, but we really wouldn't care on a single-family residence whether it complied with Beach by Design?
Correct. It's just simply not applicable. They're required to follow the requirements of Article 2 of the Community Development Code pertaining to low-medium-density residential setbacks, height, et cetera.
And what I would call the purple on that map is where the new hotel would be, and that would be subject to the Beach by Design guidelines and setbacks and, you know...
It was subject, it is subject, and it has met all of the applicable design guidelines for Beach by Design.
Is the developer here his representative to make a presentation?
Mr. Mayor Brian Ungs, on behalf of Decade Sea Captain LLC, and I'll just answer any questions if you have them. I think Mr. Perry explained it very well. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to Agenda Item 7.5?
Move approval of Agenda Item 7.5.
We're just providing direction, huh?
Hmm, I think you're right.
Yep, you are.
Giving the public hearing.
Yes, you are giving direction, and you are also confirming setting a second public hearing on September 19th.
So the motion is to set the second public hearing.
There you go.
Right?
Yeah.
That's what the motion was.
Exactly.
Thanks, Mr. Compton, for confusing us.
I'm going to second that motion.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to confirm a second public hearing on September the 19th at 6:00 or as soon thereafter. Any comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 8.1 is a second hearing. Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9304-19, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, vacating the east 1.5 feet of a platted 30-foot drain adjustment. Lying over that portion, a property described in official records book 10868, page 781, also being a portion of Lot 6, Brookhill Terrace, as recorded in plat book 49, page 14, of the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
Move to adopt Ordinance 9304-19 on second reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Ordinance 9304-19 on second reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 8.2, Miss Call.
Ordinance number 9305-19, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the Clearwater Code of Ordinances Appendix A, Schedule of Fees, Rates and Charges, Article 24, Public Works Fees, Rates and Charges, Section 3E, Stormwater Management Utility Rates, providing an effective date.
Move that we adopt Ordinance 9305-19 on second reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Ordinance 9305-19 on second reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 8.3, Ms. Aiken.
Ordinance number 9306-19, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, vacating the north portion of a 50-foot right-of-way of Meadowlark Lane, also known as Meadowlark Lane. In revised map, Town of Bayview, as recorded in plat book H6, page 23, of the public records of Hillsborough County, Florida, of which Pinellas County was once a part, lying south of Gulf U, of Gulf to Bay Boulevard, State Road 60, and north of a line located parallel at 330 feet south of the east-west centerline of Section 16, Township 29, South Range 16 East, also being the centerline of Gulf to Bay Boulevard, State Road 60, plus the 25-foot wide portion of previously vacated, as recorded in official records book 19332, page 1499, of the public records of Pinellas County, Florida, providing an effective date.
I move to adopt Ordinance 9306-19 on second reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Ordinance 9306-19 on second reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 8.4, Miss Call.
Ordinance number 9307-19, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the Clearwater Code of Ordinances Appendix A, Schedule of Fees, Rates and Charges, Article 25, Public Works and Fees, Rates and Charges, Sections 3C Solid Waste Collection Rates, 3D Recycling, and 5 Other Miscellaneous Charges, providing an effective date.
I would move to adopt Ordinance 9307-19 on second reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Ordinance 9307-19 on second reading. Anybody from the public to speak to this motion? Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda Item 9.1, Mr. Horne.
Approve State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program Annual Report and Local Housing Incentive Certification for the closeout year 2016 through 2017, and interim years 2017, 2018, 2018, 2019, and allow the appropriate officials to execute save. Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Chuck Lane, Economic Development and Housing Department. As you know, we are the recipient of funds from the State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program, also known as SHIP. We're required to submit an annual reports by September 15th each year. We have three years to expend SHIP funds from the start of each program year. The report includes interim reports for fiscal year 1718, 1819, and we are closing out fiscal year 1617. The report is primarily focused on the closeout year. So for the closeout year, our SHIP allocation was $722,638, and we had an additional $213,000, $239 in program income. We spent $845,610 on housing strategies, which leveraged more than $3.8 million in other investments. We spent additional funds in homebuyer education and general program administration. As for our results in the closeout year 1617, the city assisted 29 households, seven down payment assistance loans, five homeowner rehabilitations, four multifamily rehabilitations, 12 new single-family homes, and we helped one household with our disaster mitigation strategy following Hurricane Irma. We're in good shape with our interim years. Most of what was available in 1718 is spent or encumbered. We've not yet tapped into 1819 funds, which is expected at this point. 1617 is the last year, I'd like to note, of a relatively healthy allocations that we've historically seen. As I said earlier, we received more than $722,000 in 1617. The following year, our allocation was cut to 48527. Last year, it was cut to 156785. That's about, almost an 80% reduction over two years. In this coming year, we have 164277. So those of you that have an opportunity to get the ear of a state legislator, please encourage them to support full funding of the Sadowski Act, which... encourage them to support full funding of the Sadowski Act, which is what funds the SHIP program. There is a shortage of affordable housing across our state, and Clearwater is no exception. I'll take questions, please.
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 9.1. Mr. Lane, clarify, we've gone from $700,000 down to $150,000 plus or minus?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's pretty substantial. And when you listen to some of your legislators, I think they're of the opinion that this money won't do us any good, but you made reference to how many families were impacted by this. Could you repeat that again?
Well, in the closeout year, we assisted 29 households, and we have very different strategies that we do that with. We leverage these funds. We don't pay 100% of these units. As I said, we leveraged that money that we spent, leveraged almost $4 million in other investment. We do a down payment assistance loan, for example, of course, there's a first mortgage. We're helping somebody buy a home, and there's other investment going into that home, not just our SHIP money.
So this was for 2016, 2017?
That's correct. That's the closeout year.
And that was at $700,000, so at $150,000, we probably didn't even help 10 families?
Well, that year, we're still open with our funding. That's how the program works. We do have program income. We do a lot of our business in the form of loans, so money keeps coming back in. That $700,000 that we got in 1617, a lot of that will come back in. We'll be able to use it over time to help multiple people. So it's not like in the coming years, it's only going to be 150 that we can spend. We'll have other funds in this program, and of course, we have other program funds as well.
Okay.
But this is a critical program, a critical funding source for us. We're required to match home funding from the federal program, from the federal government, and this is a fund that we use regularly to do that. So we're going to have to get a little bit more creative on how we hit that match.
And did not the governor say that he was going to be supportive of full funding or at least increased funding?
His initial budget, I believe, fully funded the Sadowski Act or always close to it, and that changed as session...
The legislature acts.
He seems to be an advocate of affordable housing.
Okay. Mr. Pogly.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the regional chamber meeting. We went over both the local, state, and the federal legislative priorities, and it was suggested that stop rating the Sadowski Act be added to those agendas. So throwing that out the board as well to support the governor.
It's on our list every year, right, Ms. Cole? You know, but our legislators, you know, seem to think that they have better use for that money. It makes it difficult, especially as you'd indicated, you know, the city, the county, you know, has all said that we needed more affordable housing, and yet here's a program that works, and we're seeing them cut it. So maybe we ought to get a letter... Why don't you all draft a letter for us, Mr. Horn, that we could send to each of the legislators? I think we did that last year or the year before.
It's been each of the last couple of years. We'll do that again, sir.
Yeah.
I'll bear that for you.
Especially if the governor's supporting this.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 9.1? Motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 9.1.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.1, comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously 9.2.
Approve the fiscal year 1920 through fiscal year 2021, 2122, three-year local housing assistance plan for Pinellas County Housing Trust Fund and adopt resolution 19-22. Mr. Lane, again.
So several years ago, the city received annual allocations from the Pinellas County Housing Trust Fund to be used for affordable housing. So those allocations are long gone. They've been depleted. The remaining balance is due to program income. It's exclusively program income. Of course, that's the revenue we receive from the payment of loans. Pinellas County Housing Trust Fund program was set up very similar to the SHIP program that we just discussed. Like the SHIP program, we are required to submit a local housing assistance plan, showing how we intend to use the county trust fund dollars over a three-year period. Current balance of the fund is just over $228,000. We expect to receive program income over the next three-year planning cycle. While difficult to predict, we expect to receive an average of about $18,000 to $19,000 in program income with this fund annually. We use this money to leverage other investments under three main strategies. One, to produce new rental and owner housing. Two, to preserve existing and rental owner housing. And three, we'll use it for general program administration. I'll take questions, please.
Any questions on 9.2? Mr. Lane, the county, I think, has taken some of the penny-for money to reserve a portion of the top half for housing programs?
That's correct. They've taken a portion of penny money to use for economic development and housing, and that's predicted to be about $180 million over the 10-year period. So half of that would go to affordable housing. While they haven't set up completely the rules on how they administer those funds, it appears that what they're going to do is use the land trust on the housing side, which is good for us. So what they'll use those funds for is to help acquire land, and then with our money, we can come in and we can help with construction costs and other costs. So it's a pretty good matchup for us.
Very good.
We're encouraged by that.
Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 9.2?
Move approval of Agenda Item 9.2.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.2, comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously, Ms. Cole.
Resolution number 19-22, a resolution of the City of Clearwater, Florida, adopting the City of Clearwater Three-Year Local Housing Assistance Plan in accordance with the Housing Trust Fund established by Pinellas County Housing Finance Authority, covering fiscal years 2019 through 2020 through 2021, 2022, providing an effective date.
Move that we adopt resolution 19-22.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt resolution 19-22, comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 9.3, Mr. Horn.
Approve settlement of a property damage liability claim or payment of $130,825.25 to HG Brown and Associates LLC, the property owner, with the general release of all claims and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Osorio.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. On June 27, 2019, a city water main broke near the entrance of the Best Buy store located at US 19 and Drew Street. The water released, intruded into the asphalt sublayer of a section of the parking lot and caused the rippling of the surface, impairing and limiting access to tenants' stores on the property. The property owner, HG Brown and Associates LLC, is asking the city to repair the areas where the parking lot had to be cut to reach the main water line, and also for peripheral damage caused by the water intrusion to parts of the parking lot. The tenants affected include Best Buy and Rooms to Go. HG Brown Associates have agreed to settle this claim for $130,808.25 pending city council approval. The Risk Management Division and the city's Claims Committee recommend approval of this settlement. Funding for the payment of this settlement is available in the budget for claims expense in the central insurance fund.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 9.3? Mr. Pogly.
Thank you, Mayor. We had the one-on-ones, thank you. This was not for loss of sales or revenue. This was just to repair the parking lot.
Yeah, we moved quickly to curtail that because that was our biggest fear, especially with the anchor tenants there.
Yeah. Yeah, well done. Thank you.
Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 9.3?
I move to approve Agenda Item 9.3.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.3, comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 9.4, Mr. Horn.
Approve the purchase of excess liability, excess workers' compensation, and numerous specialty insurance policies from 1 October 1, 2019, through September 30, 2020, at an amount not to exceed $875,000, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Osorio, again.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Annually, the Risk Management Division retains Arthur J. Gallagher and Company to renew these policies with the best insurance carriers and market rates available. As a result of their efforts, we are recommending renewal through Brit Lloyds of London for our excess liability package, which includes coverages for general liability, automobile liability, liability, and other liability policies protecting important city operations and departments. We are also recommending renewal with Safety National for our excess workers' compensation package, including employer's liability and excess policies for our storage tanks, operational boats, cyber liability, and numerous flood policies. Last year, we obtained a two-year rate guarantee agreement with Brit, our liability carrier, and this renewal marks the beginning of our final year. Due to the city's increase in operating expenses, employee and city population growth, this premium increased by 4.08% to $289,875 on our excess package policies. Brit will consider another multi-year rate agreement after the end of this renewal policy. The premium for excess workers' compensation coverage increased by 6.85% to $334,788 due to the city's payroll growing. Safety National has agreed to keep our renewal premium through 2021. Risk Management is also estimating an increase of 10 to 15% for the additional access policies and a 10% increase for the various flood policies. This request includes a contingency of $16,876.25 to accommodate any other unforeseen increases. The total requested not to exceed amount of $875,000 is a 7.36% increase over fiscal 2019, not to exceed of $815,000. The Risk Management Division is respectfully requesting approval of the renewal of these policies.
Questions on Agenda Item 9.4?
I'm sorry, the comment was...
Mr. Osorio, we just saw what damage a hurricane can do. Thankfully, it wasn't here, but this is why we need this, correct? To help us recover from situations like this?
Yes, yeah. And last year, we were fortunate to renew our property policies, increasing the windstorm coverage limit from 60 million to 75 million because the market rates and premiums are really attractive to do that. So in light of what you just said, that was our precautionary move for our property policies. So, yeah, you're exactly right. We, you know, we have to take measures to increase our coverage and protect ourselves the best we can.
Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 9.4? Motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 9.4.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.4, comments, counsel? Mr. Pogly?
This is shared across the board because every one of my policies, homeowners, auto, they all go up, so, I mean, they get everybody, not just municipalities, maybe at a higher level, but, yeah, it's costing my business in staying safe.
Yeah, yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.4. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 9.5.
Approve an increase to purchase order number 19000957 with Marlin Glass Services Gas Services LLC in the amount of $140,000 to provide portable natural gas service to the Dale Webb Residential Community in Pasco County. Mr. Langill.
Good evening. Brian Langill, Assistant Director for Clearwater Gas System. This is a subdivision that's up in Pasco County, is north of State Road 54 and east of the Sun Coast Parkway. We have our gas lines installed in the neighborhood. However, we are not able to get our gas line, our main artery line on Tower Road to that subdivision right now because of the road has not been fully developed yet by Pasco County, and so right now, we're using temporary portable natural gas at the site there that's on tanker trucks that they deliver to the site, and it's connected into the houses in the distribution main right there. So we're requesting an increase to the purchase order because we're going to be experiencing this for several more months while we're waiting on the road to be fully developed and that we can install our gas line and get it in the right-of-way.
Questions for staff on 9.5? Mr. Pogly.
So several more months, $140,000, that covers how much? How much timeframe?
That's through March of 2020.
That's through March of 2020?
Yeah. We have the right-of-way permit for Pasco County to go on Tower Road, but certain portions of the road is still private property, so we're getting dedicated easements for that property as well. We hopefully will have that by, within the next month. Construction will take several months because of the wetlands areas. It's all underwater right now. This portion of the road is, you know, has not been developed yet, so we have to make sure that we're not going to be in conflict with the future road development. So that's why we just don't run our line, you know, six months ago, a year ago, when we knew the project was in place, that we wanted to make sure that we knew exactly, you know, we were confident enough where our gas line needed to go, so that way we're not having to replace it at a future date.
I'm all about expanding gas. I'm waiting for Hernando County because we don't have a provider up there. And it seems prudent to do the gas lines in the neighborhood and get it ready, but I guess my only concern would be that several more months after March 20, how many more extensions before Pasco gets their road together? And what would be the ROI for... What's our return on investment for 140,000 times how many extensions?
Yes, we have, you know, we have several hundreds of homes in there. Mr. Warrenton has data on that that he can present.
The, this is the first, the front subdivision off of Tower Road. There's probably 15,000 homes beyond behind this that haven't been, haven't even been planted yet. So, I mean, it's just important to get gas into these first homes in order to set the stage for the rest of the subdivision.
That answers my question 100%. Yeah.
Mr. Condon.
When you say portable natural gas service, are these trucks that are going to fill temporary tanks?
Yeah, they fill their tanks on trucks. They're long cylinders that are in flatbed trucks. They have them at the site in the neighborhood there. They put them there, store them there. They're connected to our distribution lines within the neighborhood, and when they are almost empty, they swap them out. That's the service that we're...
Not at each house, but central?
No, it's in a central location, yes.
Mr. Albert.
So we are getting payback on this from the homes that we are servicing.
We've got 91 homes as of this last month that are already in service and providing income to us. You're right. And this is not uncommon. This is, we probably had six incidences over the last five years where we've used a tanker for some period of time. Typically, oh, it's been a month or, you know, a shorter period. We had one here last month that we were right on the edge of whether we were going to get it there in time, and we did get the line built in time, did not have to put one in. But occasionally, this is a, this is the remedy we have to do. We did it for a public shopping center a couple of years ago. You know, it's just trying to build ahead of yourself to get there before the, before the properties turned on.
Thank you.
I guess a couple of...
Mr. Hamilton.
$140,000, that's the maximum this contract would cost us if we have to go all the way to March of 2020.
Right, yes.
Number one. Number two, another question, I guess, if you don't want to answer it, don't answer it, but what is the capacity of Clearwater Gas? I mean, how many more homes are we capable of serving? I mean, could we go potentially all the way through Pasco up into Hernando and serve up there?
We have, we believe, and we've laid out on strategic plan, that we could grow to be approximately a 75,000 customer system before we build out the territory. We've got, we just crossed 26,000 this year, and so we probably could grow to be three times the size.
We will need additional capacity of gate station supply obviously to do that, but right now, we're...
Spend money to make money.
But because of the incident that we had at the natural gas fueling system where we kept passing extensions, 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 and it kept costing us more money, reassure us that in this case, that we know that the road is going to get built by a certain date?
Yes, well, we have the permit approved to run our line where we specced it out with Pasco County already, so right now, we're just waiting on the easements from the individual owners, which is actually Bexley LLC, which is the neighborhood that they're building the homes in. So they're going to sign off on that, give us the easement, and then once we have that, we'll bring it to you for acceptance, and then we'll run our line in that pathway there.
But if I could add to that, because of that past experience, this, that's why we planned this all the way to March. We have, we know that we got enough money in the purchase order. We don't want to come back month after month after month to you, so we're quite sure.
And then the money that we're approving for this expenditure comes not from our property tax dollars, but from your revenues as an enterprise fund, correct?
Correct, right, right.
So it's the ratepayers who are doing this?
It is the ratepayers.
And not, I think that needs to be clarified so that the citizens don't think that we're upfunding this money for Pasco County. Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions, council? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 9.5?
Move approval of...
Wait, wait, somebody's got, make sure that you fill out a card and you can speak, ma'am?
I'm Rita Lynch. I just want to clarify what you just said because I live in Clearwater, and I've been told by the Clearwater Department that although I do not have gas, if I want to have gas, that the people in the neighborhood have to chip in to run the lines. But you're saying it's not, I was thinking that it's our property taxes that are paying for you, but you're clarifying that and saying absolutely not. It's not our money that's going to provide this. All right, just needed that clarification.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else from the public to speak to 9.5? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 9.5.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.5. All in favor, comments? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 9.6.
Award invitation to bid number 45-19, galvanized pipe and fittings to Burt Low Supply of Lakeland, Florida, and Empire Pipe Orlando, Sanford, Florida, for the supply of galvanized pipe and fittings into the annual not to exceed amount of $140,000 with option for two one-year term extensions. Authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Langill again.
Yes, this is an item here for parts for our gas meters and all above ground gas piping that goes into the homes, into businesses. So it's the meter set and then everything beyond the meter set that's owned by the customer. Burt Low Supply and Empire Pipe were the lowest and most responsive bidders. We have selected certain line items to go to each company that's in your agenda packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on 9.6? Mr. Hamilton.
Again, kind of similar to the previous item, we're not, we're authorizing Clearwater Gas revenues to be spent on the, on this pipe, not general tax revenues that we're collecting from Clearwater homeowners.
Correct, correct.
These are revenues and, and revenues coming into Clearwater Gas from Clearwater Gas customers, and we're authorizing you to spend that money, which is what we do. So, correct?
Yes, that is correct. It comes from ratepayers, which go into our project funds, which are budgeted for these items here.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mr. Poglyes?
Hey, it's, it's related, but it's unrelated. Clearwater Gas employees that are employed through the city Clearwater Gas, and I should know this, but I don't, I want to, I want to remember it. How many Clearwater Gas employees do we have? And they're not paid through the enterprise fund, right there?
We have approximately 100 right now. We were authorized to have 110, but right now, we've got about 100.
Do you pay them internally through the enterprise fund?
Through the enterprise.
And then on the other side of that, I know that Clearwater Gas utilizes hundreds of contract workers throughout the city because I see their crews all over the place. Do you know how many contractors we use and how many employees?
I think it's approximately 30 equivalent employees. You know, it's the number of them, but they're not there for all, all day on their jobs and whatever. But we try to track how many full-time equivalent contractors.
So 130 employees are responsible for all the expansion, maintenance, and service that is provided from not only here. We go as far as Pasco? How far south do we go?
We go as far as Reddington Beach, south into Reddington Beach, where Reddington and Madera connect.
Okay. Thank you.
Omerton Road is our southern boundary on the mainland.
Who's our biggest local competition?
The power company.
Well, yeah, that's another argument we're having with them, so yeah, okay. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody from the public to speak to 9.6? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 9.6.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.6. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 9.7. Mr. Horn.
Approve purchase orders for payment of premiums to various providers under the city's 1% life insurance program in the annual not to exceed amount of $150,000 for the period October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2022. Authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Ms. Jones.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Shannon Jones. This is an HR Director for the City of Clearwater. Tonight, I'm here to present the 1% life purchase order. The city maintains the benefit for employee, employees, which we refer to as the 1% life insurance program. This program is such that the city will match employees' contributions for these independent life insurance policies up to 1% of the employee's salary, annual salary, effective October 1 of 2018. These programs were, we no longer permitted new enrollment in these programs. However, we do have a group of grandfathered employees that are allowed to continue these life insurance policies. And we have, we currently have five vendors that we pay this 1% life insurance policy to. So we are requesting an approval of a purchase order to cover the anticipated billing for the next three fiscal years for the following vendors, which would be Equitable Life, Prudential Insurance Company, Western Premium Life, Principal Life, and New York Life. The funds are included in our annual city budget every year, and the purchase order request is considered to, for continuation of services and is not required to go out for bid. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on 9.7? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 9.7? Motion?
I move to, I move to approve Agenda Item 9.7.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.7. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 9.8. Mr. Horn.
Authorize the funding of city medical insurance and a contract between the city and Cigna Healthcare for administrative services under a self-insured funding arrangement for the period January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2020, at a total not to exceed amount of $20 million to be funded by city budgeted funds, payroll deductions of employee and retiree premiums. This is Ms. Paul. This is her first time. Be nice to her.
We're, we're so nice that we change it from the work session to prime time so that more people could see her.
Ms. Paul.
Trying to get my PowerPoint up here.
We got it.
There it is.
It's up? Okay, great. Good evening. I'm here to review the 2020 medical plan renewal. Just a little bit about our current health plan. We are self-funded, and the city pays claims, there you go, the city pays, pays claims when the plan is used. Prior to self-funding and the Employee Health Center, the city would see a 10% plan increase or the plan design would need to be lowered to keep the increase at a lower rate. So basically, since the city has experienced escalated healthcare claims due to expenses to industry inflation and medical claims processed through the plan. For Plan Year 2020, our projected increase is 5% for the self-funded medical program. The City Benefits Committee unanimously voted to renew with the 5% increase at the 75%, 68% contribution scenario for dependent coverage. This increase is primarily driven to maintain adequate funding, to cover projected medical trend increases, and cover continued current large claim costs, as well as the addition of a preventative screening incentive program called Motivate Me. And I'll elaborate on that in just a few minutes. This is our budget for medical plan and the cost to run the Employee Health Center. Our plan design is not going to change. We're going to continue to utilize our open access network. There will be no changes in co-pays, deductibles, or co-insurance. However, we will be adding Motivate Me, which is an enhanced wellness incentive program to encourage preventative screenings and employee health center utilization. But first, I want to talk a little bit about our current cost drivers. We have 57 catastrophic claims that accounted for 38% of our medical claims cost, and 77% of those catastrophic claims are associated with chronic conditions. Cancer is our highest catastrophic cost driver. Poor utilization of, poor utilization of preventative screenings contribute to these chronic claim conditions. And several of our high-dollar claims experienced could have been prevented or lessened had conditions been detected at earlier stages. So in developing the proposed, proposed medical wellness initiative, Motivate Me, the design was focused on combating chronic conditions and incentivizing participation in personal wellness activities. So Motivate Me is a Cigna program that incentivizes healthy medical lifestyle choices. The program includes wellness screenings and preventative care visits that target our current cost drivers. The program is included in our 5% funding increase and is available to all employees that are covered under the 2020 health medical plan.
Could you go back one slide?
Sure.
And I apologize for interrupting.
Sure.
There's an important, the very last bullet point there.
Yep.
Out of 1,800 employees, 800 are identified as having a chronic condition or a lifestyle risk.
Yes, that's a lot.
Or, or family members.
Correct.
So it's, okay. So it's not just 1,800 employees. It's, that's 800 out of, we have a number of how many are covered? Total families and individual employees at all?
Um, I don't think I have a total number on the plan.
2,600 total on our plan.
All right, sorry, thank you.
No problem.
That kind of sticks out.
Yeah. So Motivate Me is a program that is, that incentivizes healthy medical and lifestyle choices. The program includes wellness screenings, preventative care visits, and that target our current cost. And the program is included in our 5% increase. So currently, our employees receive a $25 gift card when they get their wellness screening, and that gift card is to Publix. The Motivate Me incentive for wellness screenings is double at $50, and the employee gets to choose the reward from a list of vendors. So it's, it's expanded. The Motivate Me program incentivizes employees to take the wellness screening a little bit further and to participate in any of the wellness activities listed so they can earn up to $200 in rewards annually. The $200 can also offset some of the costs of the 5% renewal if the employee has experienced an increase in their health insurance premiums. We're very excited about this program because it's going to benefit our employees, and it's also going to help drive our claim costs down. Okay, this is our Employee Health Center. And as you all know, probably, in June of 2019, we relocated from the second floor to the fourth floor. So we have a bigger and more attractive area for our, for our facility so we can help our employees and their families. And we continue to see our Employee Health Center penetration increase, and our employee satisfaction is almost at 100% as well. We continue to experience annual savings in our medical plan by shifting costs through the Employee Health Center, and this is done through network replacement, lab replacement, brand drug avoidance, as well as flu shot replacements. Any questions?
Questions for staff on Agenda Item 9.8? Mr. Poglyes?
Just a final question. 66% of our employees utilize the Health Center? That last slide, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Let's amplify on that. The 33% that don't, is it because they're covered by other insurance or not to have insurance at all?
So we're not exactly sure as to why the employees aren't using it, which is why we're continuing marketing efforts, and that's what a big portion of this Motivate Me program is, is to make sure that the employees understand what a benefit that our Employee Health Center is. So this Motivate Me program will help drive them to there so they get to experience the clinic and see what it is, and help reassure them that everything is 100% confidential and ran exactly like any other medical facility or private care physician office would be.
And if, if the employee wants the health insurance just for himself or herself, there's no charge, correct?
No.
The only charge is if they add family members.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I have comments to make to build up on that, so let's, we'll, we'll get to that point later. Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 9.8? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 9.8.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.8. Comments, council? Okay, employee. Oh, Mr. Albert, go ahead.
Yeah, and as I said before, I just, anybody that's got hypertension should go, just go to the fourth floor and look out the window because you're overlooking the golf course there, and I'd make you feel a lot better just doing that. It's a beautiful place.
I was going to be a little bit more graphic. I mean, nobody likes these preventative tests, or at least certain preventative tests. But it is a whole lot better to have a preventative test than to suffer the disease. And if you're an employee and don't have health insurance, I realize that most of you are younger than I am and think that you're not going to get sick, but you will. And this program is to help you. I enjoy going to my doctor and saying that she's glad that she only sees me once a year. But there are others who aren't that fortunate. So please, take advantage of this program. Motivate yourself to be healthy because the city benefits, but more importantly, you benefit. You benefit. And that is more important to the five of us up here, that you stay healthy, that you stay safe, and you take care of yourself. And this program will help you do that. Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.8. All, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 9.9.
Approve a revised standard agreement form to be used with the various youth cosponsored groups, and the City of Clearwater and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chris Cook, Athletics and Events Section, Parks and Recreation. The revision to this agreement is to protect the city and our 12 youth cosponsorship groups. Some of the highlights include adding in exhibits to help these groups provide us the, the information that we're looking for and take the guesswork out of that. We're also adding or clarifying language on ADA requirements, background requirements, an increase to a Level 2 from a Level 1, additional training opportunities, financial protections, and other insurance requirement updates through working with our risk manager on those. We're also providing clear language for what approved usage will be through this agreement. And we're asking council to continue to allow the city managers designated to execute these 12 agreements. That'll take any questions.
Questions for staff on 9.9? Mr. Cook, clarify, you've listed some of the programs. Are they the ones that already have signed on to this form and then it's the others that, that haven't that this agenda item is geared to?
We would be getting 12 agreements with all 12 organizations. It's a new version of the old agreement.
Okay, but, but why, why are only three programs identified and not the other nine?
Good evening, Kevin Dunbar, Director of Parks and Recreation. That was just an example of some of the groups. It goes, including such as, and so just a couple of examples, the youth groups, which typically, when you start saying things like the Little League baseball programs, the football programs, but it, but it's all, it's all 12 of the current cosponsored programs.
And the reason I'm, I'm asking, you know, we had a situation earlier in the year that were, or just within the last month or so, that why did you do something for one program and not another? And that really wasn't the case, and, and I didn't see that program listed on here, so I was curious.
They're, they're still in good standing.
Okay, okay. And, and this is going to apply uniformly to all of them, so we're not singling anybody out?
All have the same agreement.
And everybody's going to have the same agreement so that there's no question?
The only difference would be their, would be their schedules.
Yeah.
You know, based on the facilities that they need, based on the programming that they have.
Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 9.9? Motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 9.9.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.9. Comments, council? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 9.10.
Award request for proposals 30-19, event rental equipment. Award request for proposals 30-19, Event Rental Equipment and Services to Elite Event and Rentals of Tampa, Florida, in the annual not-to-exceed amount of $75,000 with the option of three one-year renewals at the city's discretion, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Cook again.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. This, this is a purchasing item. The Elite Event and Rental Company is someone that we have been using for several years for our special events, as well as our athletic tournaments and activities. They provide us with setup and breakdown services for tents, tables, chairs, and other rented equipment that we use for these, for these activities. With that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any questions for staff on 9.10?
I'm glad Parks and Rec several years ago switched to this strategy as opposed to Parks and Rec's employees and citizens humping tables and equipment in bike barricades. Seems to make probably a much better longevity decision for employees.
Mr. May, I have a.
It was a question there, right?
Um, I'm glad we still don't do that, right?
That's correct.
Is that a question?
Okay, well.
Does this go up for an RFP?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't mention that. It was RFP 30-19, so it did go up for an RFP with several responses, and they were, the selected award.
Were there any, in Ellis County, companies that bid on, or Clearwater company?
There were some, yes, there were. I can't remember the name of the company right now.
That's okay.
I have the selection in front of me, but we had several responses, and with their track record of success and their proposal, we found them to be the.
Appreciate it, thanks.
Anybody from the public to speak to 9.10?
Move approval of Agenda Item 9.10.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.10. Comments, council? This, oh, okay. Saw your hand, so I wasn't sure. No, this is an excellent company. They've been, you know, not only partnering with the city, but have been partnering with neighborhoods on, on some of the Neighborhood Day activities, and I know the owner used to live in Clearwater, and then he moved out because of his family expanded and they needed some separate schools or something, but, uh, one of our former employees still works for them, I believe, right?
Ralph Shaw?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a good group of people. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 9.11.
Approve a three-year agreement and work order to Wright Pierce, Inc., in the amount of $1,640,880 for wastewater collection system flow monitoring services, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Brown.
Good evening, my name is Jeremy Brown. I'm the Engineering Manager for Utilities. This project will collect sanitary sewer flow data that we use to identify significant sources of INI, inflow and infiltration. These measurements can be used to verify that the sanitary sewer repairs are effective and the INI has been reduced. This is the three-year contract, and I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Questions for staff on 9.11? Mr. Hamilton?
This is a not-to-exceed number?
That's correct, yes.
Over three years?
That's correct, yes, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Mr. Brown, we hear frequently that this inflow and infiltration is, is a major problem, especially from the homeowner, you know, to our lines. Is this going to detect where it is on the homeowner's property?
Uh, not necessarily. This is more or less in the system itself.
In the system itself.
That's another issue entirely, dealing with the private, private, private lines. But this is mainly in the, the larger mains, and once we see a lot of INI in that area, then we can go upstream and try to identify where it's really coming from.
But, but that, you know, counsel, if you will remember, you know, in all the discussions that we hear, this is the, the one phrase that, that keeps being repeated, that it's a major problem in contaminating, you know, the soil and our water, and, and causes additional cost to the system.
That's right. It, it overcomes the, the system itself. The systems were designed to handle wastewater, right? Not stormwater or groundwater. And over time, the pipes get cracks in them, things happen to them, and as the water gets in there, it overwhelms the system. And that's what causes the SSOs that you hear about sometimes.
Anybody from the public to speak to 9.11? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 9.11.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.11. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously 9.12.
Approve an Engineered Record Design Work Order to Metzger and Willard of Tampa, Florida, in the amount of $262,020 for the rehabilitation of lift stations 54 and 65 and lift station standards, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Brown again.
Again, Jeremy Brown, Engineering Manager for Utilities. The item before you today is for design services associated with refurbishing our existing lift stations number 54 and 65. Please note that this project also includes preparation of electrical, structural, and mechanical lift station design standards, and we expect that these standards will help streamline the design process for all new and rehabilitated lift stations within the city. Happy to respond to any questions.
Questions for staff on 9.12? Anybody from the public to speak to 9.12?
I move to approve Agenda Item 9.12.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.12. Comments, council? Again, to our residents, this is another example of how the city is trying to be proactive in, in addressing these issues and not waiting until we have major problems to tackle them. So we appreciate staff working on that. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 9.13.
Award a construction contractor TLC Diversified, Inc. of Covina, Florida, in the amount of $1,980,261.25 for lift station 45 force main replacement. Approve Engineered Record and supplemental two work orders for from McKim and Creed in the amount of $192,233, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Brown.
Again, Jeremy Brown, Engineering Manager for Utilities. There's been a history of sanitary sewer, I'm sorry, there's an existing sanitary sewer force main located on San Key, and we've had a history of maintenance issues, and we've recommended to replace that line. The construction of this line will utilize horizontal directional drilling techniques in an effort to minimize disruption to the public, meaning there's not going to be any road closures, there's just going to be lane shifts. And lastly, I'd like to point out that we're holding two public information sessions on this project. The first one we held last night at the Clearwater Salin Center, and there'll be one more coming up October 1st from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, again, at the, the Clearwater Salin Center. But I'm happy to respond to any questions.
Any questions on 9.13, Mr. Pogoy?
Thank you, Mayor. Is that similar to directional bore?
It is, that's.
Just on a larger scale?
That's exactly what it is.
What is the OD on that, those main pipes?
The pipe that we're replacing is, is a 16-inch inner diameter, but because of the depths and everything, it ends up being a little bit larger than that. It's probably more like a 24, 26-inch hole by the time before we get the pipe in. That answers your question.
Yeah, I had no idea that directional bore could install that size.
Yeah, you may have seen the pipe along the causeway recently, last couple of months. That was, that was, that was a large line that we installed across the.
It's PVC, isn't it, like?
HDPE, actually, yes.
So it's like Schedule 180 or something?
High-density polyethylene, yeah, it's, it's very, uh, it has a very long life, long life.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Anybody from the public to speak to 9.13? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 9.13.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.13. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 9.14.
Award a construction contractor Waterfront Engineering, Inc. of Tampa, Florida, for 2019 City Seawalls Project in the amount of $254,710.50, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Ms. Kessler.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Sarah Kessler, Environmental Specialist in the Engineering Department. The seawall, the city seawall project will address seawall issues at eight locations that are in city right-ofways. Five of those are on island estates. Two of them are on the intercoastal, and then one of them is on Stevenson Creek. Most of the problems with, at these seawalls are depressions behind the actual seawall that causes sands to leak out from the seawall joint. And so in those cases, the joint will be cleaned and regrouded, and then the depression behind the seawall will be repaired. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on 9.14? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda? I'm sorry.
I'm just looking at the map. Is there a reason that, I mean, three of these are on the small, it looks like they're on the small bridges that go to the different fingers of island estates. Is there a design flaw? Were all, were, were all three of them have developed these depressions, or?
I think it's more of an age issue. Like, they've just been about the same time and the same wave action, and so they all have, need repairs at about the same time.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel? Anybody from the public speak to 9.14? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 9.14.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.14. All in favor, comments?
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Counsel, 9.15 is going to have some discussion, so let's skip over that, if that's okay with y'all, and try to do 16, 17, and 18 before we take our recess. 9.16.
Award invitation to bid 43-19 service brass and brass valves to Ferguson Enterprises LLC, DBA Ferguson Waterworks of Tampa, Florida, and Forty Line Works, Waterworks of Tampa, Florida, for the supply of service brass and brass valves, in the amount not to exceed $200,000, with the option for two one-year term extensions, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Porter.
Good evening, everyone. David Porter, Public Utilities Director. Here this evening asking you to approve the award of contracts to the two firms listed so that we can buy service brass and brass valves from the various firms listed in the, in the documents you provided you. We're using the lowest bidder on two different firms so that we'll guarantee supply when we need.
Questions for staff on 9.16? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 9.16?
Move to approve Agenda Item 9.16.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.16. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously 9.17.
Award invitation to bid 46-19 Backflow Devices and Parts to Ferguson Enterprises LLC, DBA Ferguson Waterworks of Tampa, Florida, Core and Main LP of St. Louis, Missouri, and American Backflow Products Company of Tallahassee, Florida, for the supply of Backflow Devices and Parts, in the annual not-to-exceed amount of $250,000, with the option for two one-year term extensions, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Porter again.
Again, David Porter, Public Utilities Director. In a manner similar to what I just brought before you on brass parts and fittings, we'd like to have you approve the purchase of Backflow Devices and Parts to three firms. The three firms were picked as the low betters for each of the different components, and this was so, by having the three firms, we'll be able to guarantee supply and, and have a good service from the three firms.
Questions on 9.17? Anybody from the public to speak to 9.17? Motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 9.17.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.17. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 9.18.
Authorize a sole source award to Hudson Pump and Equipment of Lakeland, Florida, for fly pumps, parts and services, in the annual amount of $200,000, with the option for two one-year extensions pursuant to Clearwater Code of Ordinances, Section 2.564, exceptions to bidding, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Porter again.
Again, David Porter, Public Utilities Director. Would like you to approve the purchase or award of contract to Hudson Pump and Equipment of Lakeland, who is the sole source provider of Alice Chalmers, also known as Flight AC pumps and equipment and service. Those are pumps that we have spread out through our three wastewater treatment plants that produce high service for the reclaim system and also backwash for our filters.
Any questions on 9.18? Anybody from the public to speak to 9.18?
Move approval of Agenda Item 9.18.
Sorry? Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.18. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 9.19.
Award a contract blank, blank purchase order to Jet Age Fuel, Inc. of Clearwater, Florida, in the amount of $2,700,000, $700,000 for the purchase of unleaded and diesel fuel with two one-year renewal terms at the city's option, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Cons.
Good evening, Perry Cons and Fleet Manager. This contract is for the purchase of unleaded and undyed fuel for the delivery to the city's fuel facility located at 1701 North Hertel Leaf Avenue, and for the purchase of dyed diesel for the delivery to the city's fixed and mobile generators at various locations within the city. The fuel purchased from this contract is utilized in the majority of city equipment, including police and fire. Jet Age was the lowest bidder. Additionally, the ITP required a written commitment from the supplier of their ability to be responsive to Clearwater emergency situations. Jet Age provided a written confirmation of their ability to supply fuel 24 hours, seven days a week, including during the hurricane season. And important, of great importance is if their supply from the Port of Tampa is interrupted, they have the ability to obtain fuel via truck from Jacksonville, Florida, and also from Bainbridge, Georgia.
Questions for staff on 9.19? Mr. Hamilton?
I, I wonder, I wonder how the, how is the number, how does Jet Age Fuel determine this number or whatever, based on, you know, the fluctuation in the price of, of fuel? You know, when fuel fluctuates, is this a, a not-to-exceed number, or is this?
Yeah, that's a not-to-exceed number, but it's also, their number came up from the OPUS rec average in Tampa, and OPUS is the Oil Price Information Service, and that, that number changes daily. And they do their average, and it's a little numbers game for them, you know, when they purchase, when they go get the fuel, and then, you know, do they hold on to it a little bit?
I don't want it to happen, I don't know if it does, doesn't happen, but if gas spikes up to, you know, $3.03 and 1/4 a gallon, you know, that number, you know, we know what the, you know, that number is probably based on our annual fuel usage over the years, so we can, we have a pretty good idea what that number is, but if, you know, price spikes so much, we're not going to get it for that number necessarily if, if the gas spikes. We're going to have to do an adjustment at some point.
Right, and that would happen through the course of the year if that were, if that were to occur.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public to speak to 9.19? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 9.19.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 9.19. Comments, council? Again, this is another company that we've done business with for a lot of years.
Oh, absolutely. And they, they provided a great service to us. They've helped us out in many situations.
And, and they've helped us out in terms of emergencies, so that's good to know.
Absolutely. They've always been there for us.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Counsel, we will take a recess until 8:15 and reconvene. Thank y'all. Thank y'all. Oh, yeah, his clock is different than ours. Like to reconvene the City Council Meeting of September the 5th, Agenda item 9.15. Mr. Horne.
Provide direction regarding waterfront, I'm sorry, provide direction regarding development of a program for businesses to provide for hire motorized scooters to the public and for the use of these and other micro-mobility devices in the city. Where's Mr. Hartman?
We don't know. He thought our item was getting moved to the pen, so he went to the bathroom.
Oh, okay. All right, let's do 9:20 then. 9:20, Ms. Call.
Rose.
Appoint two members to the nuisance abatement board with terms to expire August 31st, 2023. Council members, in your agenda packs, I've provided applications for the, for three individuals. Two of the individuals are the current members who are able to be reappointed and have expressed a willingness to serve again, and we have one other individual for your consideration.
Okay. Counsel?
I think we ought to take the two that are current members.
About interest, if I have no problem reclaiming?
Well, I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, I looked at the absence and the presence that Nancy O'Neil and Susan Oliveto had. I know there's only a couple of board meetings a year, but over the past two years, Ms. Oliveto has a 50% attendance status, and I was thinking maybe, maybe we would give our new applicant, Patrick Rafferty, a go at that.
That's a good point, Mr. Albritton, because it's important that we have, you know, we have a rule that we can't miss that many. But the motion, I think that was first made, but I didn't.
I didn't really make it as a motion.
Okay. But I heard it, but I heard it as a motion, but I didn't hear a second.
A second, no motion.
Okay.
Would you like?
I'll make a motion to appoint Nancy O'Neil to a, to reappoint Nancy O'Neil for a second term and Patrick Rafferty for his first term.
And that I will second.
Motion has been made and seconded to appoint Ms. O'Neil and Mr. Rafferty. Anybody from the public to speak to the motion? Comments, counsel? Should we make it part of our rules for these advisory boards that they have to attend 75% of the meetings or 80%?
There is a code provision that already requires advisory board members to attend a certain, a threshold of meetings.
Uh huh.
In this particular case, this is a board that only meets once or twice, so that is the issue.
Okay, okay. But what is it for the other boards, then?
For the other boards, I believe they're not, if they, if they meet quarterly, they cannot miss more than two.
Okay.
And if they meet less than quarterly, I believe they cannot miss more than one. But I'd have to check and see what the code provision actually says.
Well, if it's quarterly.
If it's quarterly.
And they can miss two, that's half of them.
Mm-hmm.
So.
It's like I said, there's only a couple, you know, I've got the, showing two years of it from 16 to 19, well, this is Nancy's from first part of 2016 through 6, 19, and I guess Ms. Oliveto came in on 17 through 19.
So I'm just making, I'm wanting to make sure that whatever we do, that we're going to be consistent. So if we're already saying that you can miss half of them, then the fact that she's missed half of them should automatically disqualify her.
Now, we can, because this is one board that only meets one, twice a year, technically it only meets when needed, but we're just instituting this year two, two meetings per year. We can draft, I can work with the attorney and draft language that would accommodate this particular board because it is one of those boards that does only meet so rarely. Ms. O'Neil was appointed from the beginning, so there were five meetings in total since her appointment. Ms. Oliveto was a year afterwards, so she obviously, since her appointment, there, she's only had four meetings, because she's only missed, you know, of the four meetings that she could attend, she's missed the two. But you do have that instance where the meeting, the board only meets twice a year.
So this is under the Police Department, I think, isn't it?
Yes.
Is this something that they could, since we're only talking a couple of members on the board, well, is this a couple of members? How many members are on the board?
There's.
Seven?
Seven.
Seven.
Oh, okay.
We've never had an issue where we could not have business because of lack of members, so. And she does, I know Ms. Oliveto does work, so I know sometimes the working schedule, she was not able to work around the schedule, so that may have been an issue with the absence.
Well, like I said, counsel, my concern is that we're, if our rules for the other boards say you can miss half of them, then she's missed half of them, why are we dismissing her when she has been consistent with our rules?
I will withdraw my motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't, you know, I don't want it to seem like I'm ungrateful for her service, so.
However, only four meetings, and she misses half of four?
But, 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 but a board that meets quarterly only meets four times.
Yeah. Isn't this also the board where it can be called by special, because if there's a problem and they need a decision?
Right now, the process seems to be working really well, so that's the reason why the lack of meetings.
Yeah. So what, why don't we go ahead and reappoint her?
Okay.
But change our rules so that you have to be at 75% of the meetings?
Okay.
Well, if they only meet twice, if they meet twice a year and you miss one, you're 12%.
You're out.
So.
But I believe the code addresses the attendance in terms of a calendar year, so in a calendar year, up to this point, yes, they've only met twice.
That's correct.
But there could be a calendar year where they would be required to meet more than twice a year depending on the need, so that really, I think, would determine, this is a different kind of board, so I'm not really sure you really want to go with the 75% because by missing one, they're already.
Just leave it alone, hope she does better. They are volunteers, they don't get paid.
Yeah, no, all right.
So.
I agree.
Okay, so can I have, the motion was withdrawn?
I withdrew my motion.
Okay, and we'll take another motion now?
I will make a motion to, for Nancy O'Neil and Susan Oliveto.
Okay.
To fill the two positions on the nuisance abatement board.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Anybody from the public to speak to the motion? All in, comments, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Are we ready now? No, you know what? Chief is here. Come on down, chief.
So we're ready?
Yeah, 9:15.
All right. Provide direction regarding development of a program for businesses to provide for hire motorized scooters to the public and for the use of these and other micro-mobility devices in the city. Mr. Hartman.
Good evening, Rick Hartman, Planning and Development, and here to present about motorized scooters and micro-mobility. To get, the intent is to get some direction and guidance from the council tonight, so I'm going to briefly go through a overview, the history of where we've been in the state statute, also talk about some of the pilot programs at other cities that we researched during this process, and then present some fundamental considerations for the council to provide direction and some staff recommendations on some of those key considerations in order to get your direction and intent for staff to move forward on this program. So there's been explosive growth in use of scooters and these micro-mobility programs throughout the nation. I mean, 180 million e-scooter rides just last year were taken, so the programs are exploding, the number of users are exploding, and it's all happened within the last two and a half to three years. It's just been incredible. You know, there are well over 100 programs, probably closer to 200, 250 now in the nation that are happening, but people like to ride for a variety of reasons. You know, we've talked about first mile, last mile, to transit and to work and such. We know about tourism and those types of things, and the enjoyment of riding, and it's basically, it's well balanced. One study has shown that between 25 and 30% of all rides are split between recreation or connecting to transit or getting to work, so it's a very even balance. It's not what I had anticipated the findings would be, and so, but there are challenges. Excuse me. And the challenges are the ones that we've all talked about previously, excuse me, especially about parking on sidewalks. They're blocking pedestrian paths because they're dockless, so some programs are instituting docked areas, but in some programs, as we'll talk about shortly, have instituted a specific on-street parking or on-sidewalk parking zones. But that is, you know, as you can see, it's blocking ADA accessible areas, and these are where everybody walks and crosses the street or goes to businesses. So what's happened in the past, as you know, we've state-passed legislation that allowed micro-mobility devices which are for hire. You know, micro-mobility under state statute means that they are for hire through a reservation system, but they've also given the rights and responsibilities of bicyclists to motorize scooters which are separately, privately owned. So basically, these devices have all the rights and responsibilities to go and be ridden wherever a bicyclist can take a bicycle. And so that extended not just to for hire, but also extended the statute to private devices, giving those the same rights and responsibilities. And so that, that is, when we came to the city council, the council said, well, you know, we'd like to give staff time to develop some guidelines and programs and come back to get your guidance about this and not just have these scooters gone wherever they are and operated on roads, on sidewalks, all throughout the city. So there was a six-month moratorium that the council passed. It'll expire on December 17th of this year. So some of the things that staff's asking you to look at tonight are the fundamental key considerations. The first question when we get to discussion would be, does council want to have a program in the city of Clearwater? But then other considerations are length of pilot program, where to allow rides, things of this sort that we'll talk about specifically when we get to staff recommendations. There's a matrix provided as well, though, that provides some outlines of the programs that's also included in your packet for St. Petersburg's proposed program, that'll be online here by the end of the year, the current Tampa program, and also Coral Gables, which was the first program in the state, and they have amended their program a couple times already, and now they have a formal program. But the matrix is to allow you to see some of these many, some of the key considerations side by side and see how different programs are addressing these issues. For. For instance, the Coral Gables program, they started out with a six-month pilot program, and then they had a second operator come in, and they extended the program ninety days, and then they decided, well, we want to have a full program throughout the city. But they have prohibited areas in their, in their primary shopping area on those corridors, so they prohibited their use in those areas. The Tampa program, which is, I like to think of it as more freewheeling than, definitely than the St. Petersburg program, that started just, it started late May, so I had been saying June. And they have many companies, I think they're looking at up to six companies now, and these companies are independently developing their own pro, their own areas for parking and staging the vehicles and the devices. They're open twenty-four seven, that's their option, whereas many other places have restricted hours, you know, not, typically not between ten o'clock in the evening and four, four, five, or six o'clock in the morning to, to restrict them. But they have the Riverwalk and Bay Shore Boulevard, where there's a lot of pedestrian traffic and residential recreation on Bay Shore. It's prohibited in those locations. And then St. Petersburg. St. Petersburg's got a very well-grounded bike-share program. They have parking areas on, on the street already, and so what they've done is they've envisioned that program and then extended it to their dockless scooters. They're restricting their rides to roads that are thirty miles an hour or less. They are restricting it to the roads only, and they're making the parking areas mandatory to be used, so that you park. But they already have, when you have a dock, when you have a bike parking system, typically you have a parking area every quarter mile or less, every two blocks. So it's not a, a big lengthy walk to just park your dock, dock your bike, your motorized scooter there, and then walk to your destination, or to get to one. That's the other thing about dockless, dockless scooters is, you know, you come out of a place and go like, wow, there's one, I'm just gonna hop on it. So, the other program I wanted to bring up was Fort Lauderdale. They had a program where they were allowed everywhere, and then they put on, because they got so much feedback, they put on a probation during certain high-season periods along the beach, the barrier island, and now they're looking at making that a permanent ban, and they're looking at banning them from their Los Angeles Shopping Center, which is another high pedestrian destination. So they're backing off a little, that's why I added that slide, because they're, they've gone to the edge, kind of, you know, well, I shouldn't say that, but, and come back. So staff, at this time, is looking for direction. And as I said, you know, the big question is, would you want to see a program here? We have two options. There is the micro-mobility program, and micro-mobility, again, means that the device is available for hire, that is used through a reservation system, and so we account for not only the user, but also for the operator, the business. Then the other side of that coin is the motorized scooter. When I say motorized scooter, under Florida statute, that means privately owned and such. So at this point, we have a moratorium on both, and we want to know, staff would like to know, would you want staff to develop the guidelines for a program and bring it back to you? And after that key question, then we would go into some of the more fundamental questions. And that would be, where? If we did a pilot program, where would you like to see a pilot program? In looking at other locations, of course, you're looking for a density of people, users, transit, and things of that sort. And so downtown seemed to be a very logical destination for a program, and then, of course, we looked at the beaches also, but we thought, you know, a good place to start would be downtown. Next big question, where to ride? Sidewalks, roads, or both? Both is what the state legislation allows, but we, having home rule, and under state legislation, we are allowed to specifically tell operators where they can be used. And we can do that for the private vehicles as well, but for here, for the, for the program, staff's recommendation is ride on the roads that are thirty miles an hour or less. One of the big reasons is that sidewalks are, either we have cafes, we have a lot of people on them, or they're very narrow, they're four or five feet wide. So if you leave a scooter there, you're blocking the passageway, no matter how you park it and such. So talking with the traffic operations and such, we thought in the downtown area, restricting it to these lower-speed roads would be a very good way to start a pilot program. And we have that, you know, we have that dynamic in downtown, especially during season, where we would see a lot of use and a lot of these different destinations to get to from one, one place to another. Next consideration, how early, how late? The statistics, the studies, show that there really isn't a giant increase in injuries or crashes during the nighttime, late nighttime hours, you know? So it's, it's pretty even between nighttime and daytime, as far as the statistics that have come out so far. The main cause of crashes and injury right now, though, is first-time riders. It's a third, under the, a recent CDC study. And so that's just people learning how to ride them. So we would have recommendations when we came back with the program on how to address those types of issues. Where to park? This is the big one, or a big one. It's, do you want to have spaces on the street? You could take out a parking space, and just like we've done for Cleveland for the bike parking, we could have the other spaces dedicated, we could put them in the furniture zone. Tampa is allowing the, the companies are striping using colored tape that matches their company colors, and they're taping off their own parking corrals. So this is another decision. Would you like, and when I say dockless, they can just be left wherever? And the only thing is, we would tell the operators that the operators need to stage them, needs, need to place them in one specific spot. So the operators would have a corral, but the users would be able to leave them wherever. That way, the operators can always pick them up and leave them in one place, or when they rebalance, when they redistribute them, so they don't all get clustered in one area. Sidewalk corrals, or road corrals, or both. So that's another decision that we would like your guidance on in developing a program. And this, with your direction, would lead us to coming back to you in late November, in time to present a program, if that's your desire. And we have to have two readings, because this will require some ordinances to be adopted, and that's where we are. But if we get the direction from you on the fundamentals, then staff is very confident that we can back with a, a really good program for the city, if that's what you desire.
Let me just, for clarification...
Yes, sir.
We would have to do an RFP, right, for these vendors, or we just open it up and...
Yes, we would come back in November with the, not only the program guidelines in place, but also with the RFP for vendors. And a lot of those other concerns that I had shown on one slide previously, the other concerns, those come out during the development of the program, and the vendors, actually, every program I've seen, has been developed in working in conjunction with certain vendors, even though they haven't been selected. But they help guide the process for some of those other considerations, such as, where is the storage facility staff? Who's, who's going to be manning the phones and answering calls and things from people who are running these things, or saying, hey, this is blocking, come pick it up? So there, there are a lot, a lot of details to these programs, but the RFP would be one of the things we'd come back with in November to you.
So start us, make it easier for us? Because we can be here all night discussing different...
Yes, sir.
What, what do you want answered first?
Counsel, would you like to have a program for motorized, for micro-mobility devices here in the city of Clearwater? That's the first.
I don't like that as the first question.
I would have to narrow it down with another question.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not going to spend any time on it if you all don't, don't want, don't want to allow scooters in the city.
I...
Okay.
If I could clarify and pinpoint his question, is that this is just for commercialized vendors? This is what, will, this regulation, and how are we designing this, will be for them? Micromobile. If you still own one privately, these rules won't, they can go currently what state guidelines will be. This would just be for commercial vendors, that we may or may not authorize in the city.
That is correct.
So the motorized scooter question is off the table?
Well, if we, it's not off the table, we can address that separately with your guidance as well. Yeah, it's, that is a separate question. At this point, I'm, I was going to go through the program, which is the, of the reservation system, the for-hire applies only to the for-hire vehicles and the operators, to develop a program. And then, as Ms. Aiken is probably going to tell you, then we, then we have the option of regulating private motorized scooters as well.
And I think that's why he started that with, that's the first question? You start with the private one, and then we can, then everything else really relates to the micro-mobility program.
Yeah. We decide not to do it, it's not anything else's move.
Short discussion.
So if we decide not to have motorized scooters, whether they're private or, or for-hire?
Well, you start with the private, and then we'll talk about the for-hire, because they are, we would regulate them differently. And that's why you broke into two separate questions for you.
Yeah, so number one is, would you, do, we want to allow, do you want to allow motorized scooters on the streets or sidewalks of Clearwater, as they are, as they would be allowed under the current state legislation?
Let's tackle private first.
Private, private, yeah, yeah.
Because that's residential neighborhood, then let's tackle...
Okay.
I guess my, my question becomes, if I may, ask the city attorney, people who already own these, are they, they're not breaking any, any of our laws or codes, because we have an established one, correct?
Well, right now, we have a moratorium.
Correct. But if you, but if someone owns their own personal, private scooter, and they ride it on the street or somewhere, are they using it illegally in the city of Clearwater?
Counsel, Matt Smith, Legal Department. The way the moratorium is now, it addresses both private and for-hire scooters, so technically, yes, if someone were riding their scooter around now, if a moratorium had affected, they are technically in violation.
But we're not real, we're not enforcing it in, in that manner.
Not to my own.
Because, because, I mean, I'm, if I may, I've got, I'm having a hard time wrapping my arms around Tampa versus St. Pete. I mean, Tampa just started their program, and it's on the sidewalks and not on the street. St. Pete is going one hundred and eighty degrees in the other direction and saying, you can be on the street, but you can't be on the sidewalk. I look at downtown Clearwater and say, we don't, I wouldn't really want them on the sidewalk because of the cafes and, and whatnot, but we have one-lane road in each direction through our downtown, because that's the way we designed it and, and have done the streetscape. We don't have a dedicated bike lane on Cleveland Street to be able to do a corral in a bike lane, or on the street itself. I just, I don't know where y'all come in, but, you know, what I've been thinking about is, we did a hundred and eighty-day moratorium, maybe we expand it, extend it for another hundred and eighty days, let St. Pete's get started, we can compare the two programs a little better, get some information on how St. Pete's is working out with people on the street versus sidewalk, and go for it. I mean, I can tell you, you know, there's a part of me, though, and, you know, people can say what they want about it, but I don't see these being beneficial on Clearwater Beach. We have so much conflict already, so much traffic, both pedestrian and vehicular, that you add this dynamic on top of it, you're creating so many opportunities for conflict and injury and, and other things, that I just don't see it being, yeah, sure, it, it looks like a fun thing, and, and it probably is a fun thing, but I'm not sure the conflicts it's going to create are worth the, you know, worth the effort, to be honest with you. So I, I'd be happy going another hundred and eighty days and letting St. Pete get started, and we can look at how theirs is, and we can see how Tampa is. I mean, I've heard great things, I've also heard some horrible things about Tampa. So, you know, I just, as far as Clearwater's concerned, to me, it's not soup yet. I'm not, I don't, I don't know that I'm ready to move on it.
Mr. Albrecht.
I think that I would like to go forward with the micro-mobility program. I mean, I think, but I'd give it to staff, and you guys give us a recommendation, which, what it is. You've already said you think starting in downtown is, is first, but I, if, if we don't say, yes, we want to go forward on this, then it pretty much dies on the vine, unless we extend it and say, like, Mr. Hamilton, let's bump it another six months, you know, and see how the other ones do. I'm okay for having staff give me some recommendations, and I decide in November whether we, you know, what we do then.
Staff is recommending, if you would like a program, that we would develop the program over the next three months for the downtown area. That's our recommendation.
Yes.
Mr. Poglyz.
Thank you, Mayor. Interesting fact that I received from Mr. Bertels during the break, since this inception, and it's been rolled out, there's been eleven fatalities on scooters, scooter operators.
Yes.
And like you identified, it was first-time users. This is like, you learn how to ride a bike maybe at five or six years old. Residents, okay, you own one in a neighborhood, that's different. Are tourists that come on the beach, they're all, I would suggest they're going to be all first-time users. And with that intensity, what I'd like to do is, we have a member in the audience I'd like to ask a question of, he's actually a, a beach restaurant operator. I would like to ask his opinion on what he thinks of this, knowing the intensity, density, both on sidewalks, both on the streets, given the roundabouts and everything else. If, if you're willing to make a comment, Mr. Shelton, on record, I'd like to ask you what your thoughts are on this. Because I haven't been called by any hotel operators or other restaurants, and that may not influence my decision either way, but I would like to hear something from one of the operators on the beach.
This is, I'm not sure this is our discussion item, and, and opening it up, then...
Well, no, I specifically asked one individual.
Well, but, but I may have a different individual to ask.
Well, you should, if it's going to help you with your decision.
But, but I can do that privately.
Okay.
And, and what I'm concerned about is that we opened this up to a, you know, this is our discussion, to, to come up with some guidance first, you know, before we, we, you know, have a public discussion, when, when staff comes back to us with some rules. So I, I'm just, if, if this were a work session discussion, which is what it was scheduled as...
Well, kind of is both, because we didn't get...
Well, I, I know, but, but I'm, I'm going back to, initially, this would not be open to the public for discussion, because we're not asking, we're not discussing a particular recommendation. So I, I'm, I'm just a little leery about opening it up to the public to discuss right now.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to gather more information, so I can give staff direction for tonight.
All right, well, let, let everybody have an opportunity to speak and ask their questions, and then we'll, we'll just see if anybody from the public wants to speak, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
We're jumping back in between number one and number two. We have to stick with one...
Right.
And answer it.
Yeah.
And then move on.
Well, in...
If I can talk about number one, I do think that we ought to have motorized scooters on our sidewalks and roads, but I think we need to be flexible enough, depending on what the street is and what the sidewalk is. Not every sidewalk can handle motorized scooters, like downtown, just as they, they couldn't do bicycles now because of the, you know, the crowds on the streets. And then also, the, the rate of speed of cars on those streets must... And then also, the rate of speed of cars on those streets must dictate whether we put a motorized vehicle that can't go faster than 15 miles an hour on a 40 mile an hour street. And I've seen bicycles on those roads that, where there's no bike lane and they're trying to ride a bike in six inches of space between the white and sidewalk. So I think with flexibility, yes, we ought to allow them on sidewalks and roads just as we do bicycles, but doing it smartly and taking each sidewalk, each road, yes.
Those are slightly inconsistent.
Right.
Because if you're going to allow it where you allow bicycles, that's everywhere.
Yes.
Under state law. So, and state law would allow that for the private motorized scooters if that's what you wanted to do. So you're kind.
If we have home rule, we can make our own decisions on it.
Yes, but at this point, you're no longer treating it like a bicycle. So are you going to treat it like a bicycle, which is what the state law says? We can prohibit it. If you want to limit locations, I presume that we could for the private ones as well. But that may get a little difficult.
Well, let me try to clarify this for a second because you did, I was uncomfortable with one of the things that you said, and that is, let's look at a skateboard. Right now, we say that you cannot have a skateboard on beachwalk, right?
Yes, sir.
But based on what you said, you would allow a motorized scooter to be on the sidewalk and beachwalk? And I don't know that that's what we want. So you're right in that, I think, based on what Mr. Hamilton was saying, we need to decide whether or not we're going to have motorized scooters so that we can make them legal during this moratorium period. And I think I'm hearing that we're comfortable in doing that.
Yes.
Okay? So if we were to do that, what restrictions can we put on them? Does that allow them to go on beachwalk unless we say no? They can go.
Yeah, the state law floor is that they can go everywhere that a bicycle can. So that's where you start and you can decide you want to allow them in one area and not in another, but where you take no action, they can go anywhere.
Okay, so we would have to say, we don't want them on beachwalk or on the sidewalks of beachwalk. We don't want them in the roundabout. Or do we?
Well, if I may suggest, it'd be easier from a regulatory perspective to just have an area that if you're not going to allow them, you know, instead of on beachwalk or on specific areas, it might be easier to just look at, you know, prohibiting them at the beach or on sidewalks at the beach if you wanted to do it that way. Those larger, I think, would be easier for, from enforcement and from notification of the users.
But I want to use it from downtown Clearwater to use the trail to come across to Marina.
That's, that's another challenge.
Yes, sir.
Getting, getting down to the trail from downtown because of the slope is, is an issue we've been discussing.
They can't break. So you wouldn't want it on the bridge?
Sorry, Mr. Horn.
Mayor, wouldn't it be better if you all want to, if you want to allow the scooters, wouldn't it be easier then for us to come back to you and give you some recommendations on how to implement?
Yes.
That's all I wanted to get.
Yeah, but I didn't, I didn't want us to go down, well, let it wherever bicycles are because that's not where we may want to be.
No, understand, understand. I mean, you know, we, we could come back with a framework.
Okay.
And then you can then go from there.
Okay.
You can, you can refine that if there's something that we're recommending that you're not comfortable with.
Okay.
As opposed to try and piece it together.
Here, don't want to do that. But I was concerned that we were going to go away with this impression that you could do it on beachwalk. And I don't think that we were there.
So that's, so you've answered the first question.
Okay.
Answer number one.
All right, now let's go to the second.
Now to number two.
Yes, so as far as staff recommends developing a pilot program for 12 months for the downtown area where we have the micro mobility devices available for rent for hire and we'll do the RFP and we would do pass ordinances and we'd bring that back to you in November, you know, to get your approval and have it apply before the moratorium expires. So that's what we're asking. Would you want a pilot program developed for allowing these to be hired in the downtown area?
I've heard two different opinions over here. Let me see what I've got over here.
Yes.
Yes, what?
Clearwater does want a micro mobility program.
Downtown?
Downtown.
Now or wait another six months?
I don't believe the other way.
Okay. Mr. Poglyz.
Well, if we're going to have a private program, downtown would be the only place I would really want to consider it. And I don't know that a 12 month program is, I think that's too long of a pilot, a six month pilot, and I would be surprised if you get respondents to the RFP in our downtown.
I agree with Mr. Hamilton that we need to wait. I agree with Mr. Poglyz that I don't think we're going to get anybody to want to bid on it. And I think we're all in agreement that it's not going to be on the beach.
Well, I'm not there yet. I would like to, when it's time for public comment.
Okay.
If we have any public comment.
But at least for right now, I think that that's, you know.
Yeah.
So that the public sort of knows what we're thinking. I'm trying to summarize, you know, where we are, okay?
But I think I'm there.
Okay. So the question is, you know, how feasible do we think it's going to be? Because I'm hearing two saying, let's just go ahead and do it and see what happens. And I think I'm hearing three of us saying.
Well, at one point, Mr. Horn will have seen, because he's brought me in, we've been approached by several Limebird Spin and a couple of more localized companies over the last eight, nine months, asking about if Clearwater is going to allow, develop a program and allow these motorized scooters to be available for hire. So we know that they, on that side of the coin, we've been approached by the businesses.
But, but were they thinking the beach or were they thinking downtown?
They were thinking, we discussed both in the conversations.
Okay, all right. Anybody from the public want to give us some input on your thoughts? Please come forward. Again, we asked that you would fill out a cards, that we would have your name and address, and if you would identify yourself, we'll give you three minutes.
Phil Holland, Clearwater Beach. I agree with Mr. Hamilton, you will not work on Clearwater Beach. I have enough trouble with bicycles, motorized bicycles, motorized skateboards on it already that don't belong there. I don't need scooters there on the mainland maybe, not Marais Liff. Thank you.
Good evening. David Lullisand, I'm president of the Downtown Neighborhood Association, but I'm speaking privately because we haven't had a meeting on this topic of the scooters. But privately, I will suggest that we have this month coming online 1100 Apex. Station Square condos full, Nolan apartments are full. We have the perfect opportunity to use downtown, I believe, as a test for the permission to use these kinds of vehicles on the streets. I would strongly suggest that you not permit them on the sidewalks in downtown. If you just walk down there, and I walk Cleveland Street every single day, you'll see that there just isn't going to be room for that. So it should be on the roadway in this experiment. But we have the opportunity to live, work, play and use this transportation system that takes cars off the road, allows people like Amanda Thompson who lives in Nolan and walks down to City Hall to use another way to get there and to link together all these things in a controlled experiment way. So I really think downtown would be like the perfect area to do this, but keep it on the roadway.
Rita Lynch, I just have two questions that haven't been addressed. First, is there any money to be made for the city for this? Is this revenue generating in any way, shape or form? My second question is, how, if there are people dying on these things, how much risk is the city taking in enabling them? Are we exposing ourselves to injury suits of some sort by promoting this? Those are my two questions.
Anybody else from the public?
Yes, Dan Shelton, business owner. I am actually neither for nor against. I think you need to do much more investigation, having just been in San Diego and a couple of larger cities on trips. You're talking about corrals and everything else because I was in San Diego and I saw these scooters drop all over the place. I mean, all over the place in the way of, you know, sidewalks and they throw them in the streets and everything else. I think when you decide to do this, you need to, I mean, you're going to have a lot of work ahead of you. That's what I'm saying because it needs to, there's so many issues besides people, first time users being killed, which is actually the truth, that for some reason, the last few weeks, we've had, read about more of the first time scooter people being, you know, actually not knowing what they're doing and it's their fault, not the people who are using the thoroughfares. The other thing is, I do not speak for the beach or for the downtown community, but I just want everybody to think everything through, is I think the beach is, I actually see these people ride these things and I actually think they're pretty cool. I won't get on one, but because of my age, but I think they're pretty cool. But I think the city council and everything else needs to look at the different cities and find out how this is going to work. Because I, I'm neither pro nor against, but there's a lot of issues with this and I don't, and liability issues is, holy smokes, is, and you guys, you people here are very understanding, you've thought this thing out, but I think you need more to think it through further. And thank you very much.
Anybody else from the public?
Gary Lee, Clearwater. I would like to recommend wait and learn. You get to the beach, you get a lot of tourists, get a couple beers, give them 20 miles an hour, put them on a sidewalk, somebody gets hit, who's liable, who's at liable? Who's at fault there? The business owner who puts the table and chairs out there and didn't have a path for the bike? The person who's on there, maybe he's had a beer, maybe he hasn't. Maybe a novice, maybe first time, we're not sure how old, how young. We can always change and start doing it, but once we've started, it's hard to stop. So my recommendation, from my perspective, for my safety, would be wait and learn, but obviously not on the sidewalk. If you start making certain areas, if I'm a tourist and I come in and you tell me you can ride it here, but you can't ride it there, but you can't ride it there, but you can ride here, up here you can ride it on the street, down here, they don't want rules. They want to come in and if they rent it, they want to go where they want to go and they want a general rule, can't ride it on sidewalk. Okay, I'll ride it on the street. Thank you.
There would be a fee that, I know in some of the other communities that they charge for the vendor and each bike, each vehicle, correct?
That is correct, and it, his income generating, St. Petersburg is.
No, that's okay. I mean, there is a fee.
There is a fee.
Liability.
Liability is waived, they, when you, when you sign up.
Come back.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, there's a waiver for every rider that is waiving liability as part of taking the scooter. You know, you sign the agreement on your phone app and there's a waiver that you're stipulating to waive liability at that, at that point. And I believe as part of the operational agreement, then the city, you know, there's also insurance coverage of, you know, I don't know if it's a million dollar policy or more by the, that the city program will insist for each operator as well. So the city is, is covered during, by the program agreement with each operator.
Okay. I'm sorry, I called you up. Does anybody else from the public, I was going to, I had thought I had cut off, I thought we had finished with public comment, but does anybody else from the public want to speak and then, okay, I'm sorry.
Doug Kelly, Clearwater. I can relate a little bit to this because when I lived in the Florida Keys, my dad and I had personal watercraft rentals and jet skis. We went through the same liability and concerns and zones and many of the other questions. In my opinion, it's nice to say you can sign a waiver, but you cannot contract away your negligence. So the operator would still be responsible to carry a pretty large insurance policy, co-insuring the city. Of course, you've always run the trouble of somebody getting a larger judgment than the size of the, of the insurance policy. But I would say, let the city do the recommendation, give it a roll. And I disagree with the gentleman who said you can't stop it. If it looks like it's a problem and it's not working and it's just too dangerous, then cut it off, stop it. It's just that simple. Thank you.
Before I cut public comment, anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Okay, I apologize.
And I would like to state that the, that a 12 month program, and this happens quite often, can be stopped at any time. That is part of the operational agreement.
Go back to the liability question for a moment. You say that they would have a policy, but let's say that we have it on the street and I hit a pothole and caused an accident, then does the city get sued?
Mayor, Mayor and Council Matt Smith again, Legal Department. Obviously, we take all the normal precautions, we'd have the insurance requirements, we'd have an indemnification clause, but you're, I mean, that's not any guarantee. You're still going to have users that encounter uneven payment, a pavement, they're going to run into a city vehicle like they do now, you're still going to have the claims.
Yeah.
Yeah, no guarantees, but it's no different than if you had bicycles out there getting an accident or a pop.
And, and talk to us about the difference between, you're getting calls on the micro mobility device, but what about the bike share? Would that be something that would be included in this or that we ought to look at instead of the micro mobility device?
Bike share, to answer the question, no, we shouldn't look at bike share unless it's an add-on to the scooter because bike share, the rides are miniscule in percentage compared to what the scooter users are doing. So what's happened is the bike share companies, in order to survive, are in integrating a scooter component. And some of those bike share programs have been bought up by the scooter companies as well. So it's two really different vehicles, yeah.
Okay. Council, any other questions or thoughts that we need to pass on to staff? I'm still sensing that we've got, you know, do it for November, hold off a little bit.
Well, I mean, bring something forward in November, we can vote it down and say, no, we're not ready for it at that point. And I really think, I agree with Mr. Poglyz, I'm not sure with downtown being what it is today, that these companies, when they truly look, if we tell them downtown's the only place you can do it, we're not putting it on the beach. only place you can do it, we're not putting it on the beach, I'm not sure they're going to be interested right now. Now, with one of our upcoming agenda items, when that really gets finished, when Coachman Park gets finished and creates energy and continual, you know, crowd into downtown, the flavor for it might increase. But right now, I'm not sure. That's why, that's why I said, you know, wait another hundred, wait another six months and to gain a little bit more information.
Okay, just to get us moving along here, that's, that's just one of the questions. I think there are three saying, let's do it for November, so let's try to give some guidance on these other questions, if that's okay with everybody. Okay?
Yeah.
Hours of operation.
Okay. Would you like, well, we can recommend hours of operation, such as six in the morning or five in the morning.
Let's see if anybody has any particular desire to go 24 hours a day.
No, I think we let staff recommend all that. We just, I'm good with just...
Okay. Well, but those were some of the questions that he had up here, so that's why I'm wanting us to give them some direction as to how do we feel.
I'm okay with 24/7. It depends on the market. Let the market drive it.
Yeah.
We're not running this, running the business.
I'm fine with that, too.
I think staff's capable enough to, when they're putting together the recommendation, to look at other areas and their hours of operation, and then come back to us with a recommendation. That's what we're asking them for anyways, a recommendation. We always change the recommendation afterwards.
They're asking us for our ideas. You know, they're not saying, let me, you know, they're saying, how early, how late do you want it? They're not, you know, so I'm hearing two say 24 hours a day. And I think there's not even, there's one city in the state that's doing that, and it's thinking about cutting it back from 24 hours a day. So keep that in mind.
But we're talking about downtown, which is a different entity.
How late are the bars open in downtown?
Three o'clock.
So start from dawn to three o'clock.
But, but, to the other question is, do you want somebody who's had too much to drink on one of these scooters?
What's to say they've not had too much to drink by ten o'clock at night?
At ten o'clock, no, I know, but, but, you know, they're asking us for some, you know, ideas, so, okay. All right, what were some of your other questions?
Okay.
Sidewalk corrals or dockless?
Well, this is more of what, what our facilities allow for, you know, we try to find furniture zones on the sidewalk, which is the typical area where you place them. And one of the keys is also, especially in a pilot program, is not having too many devices on the street, so that you are able to keep them out of the way, you know, that they just don't mass somewhere. You know, but we would look at areas on the street where there might be some parking space, or there might be a, between the end of the parking and there's a striped area where we could put in with a car out area.
So, so we want it to be somewhere as opposed to dockless?
I think road corrals are good, because we, not so sure we want them on the sidewalks anyway, with the, in the cafe area district. I don't have a problem riding my bike up and down Cleveland Street. I don't get on the sidewalks, so, but I think that makes sense, road corral.
Minimum age? Do we want 16, 18?
You have a regular driver's permit. You're going to be on the roads.
That's, that's on the matrix, typically 16 years old. But the only reason St. Petersburg went with 18 is, that's one of those other details that we'll come back in November with, you know, that's, that's a list of a lot of those other details that we'll flesh out.
But I want to make sure if somebody's got heartburn, that we let you know now rather than in November.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Program boundaries, when we talk about downtown, what are we defining as downtown?
Well, again, we're looking at, you know, the waterfront, Drew Street, we might extend past Myrtle, but we, we have the capability with the geofencing to keep them off certain streets, so, you know, they can't hop on Court or Chestnut, they'll be able to cross it, but they'll get a warning signal and they'll, you know, be able to get across. But we're trying to just provide a frame of low-speed streets within the core for the pilot program, and we can adjust that if we want to go up toward North Marina or down toward Morton Plant, we can adjust that during the pilot program.
Okay. Is there any other question that you had on these slides that you wanted us to...
So, is it agreed that they should be ridden only on the roadway? In the downtown area?
That's my thought.
I have, I have one question.
Sir, Mr. Cundan.
How about Penelope's Trail as it crosses downtown?
Well, we're talking with the county about that, because that's their jurisdiction. And one of the things St. Petersburg did was, they are allowing them on the trail during certain hours, up to 34th Street, but not the entire trail. So we're working with the county to, to figure out, they're, they're talking about if they're going to allow them on the trail or not. If they're not allowed on the trail, then we'll be, you know, part of the, part of the trail really is sidewalk, roadway type of thing. But if they go beyond Drew and get on the trail, well, the initial geofencing would not let them go past Drew anyway. And going to the south, they won't be able to get on the trail past Chestnut either because of the geofencing.
You had mentioned Morton Plant, that's why I thought maybe...
If we extend it out to Morton Plant, then we will definitely work with the county to get approval to be able to use the trail, because, you know, that's a very, yeah, 15 miles an hour maximum speed, the trail makes a great deal of sense to me and to staff.
Okay. Do you have any other questions that you want us to? Mr. Horn, do you have anything else that you think that we ought to?
No.
Ms. Aiken?
We're good.
Matt?
I've got the direction I need.
Sir?
I've got the direction I need. Thank you very much.
All right, thank y'all for all your work, and to everybody for going through this. I should have called the chief up, you know.
Confirm the declaration of a state of emergency due to conditions surrounding Hurricane Dorian and adopt resolution 19-30. Mr. Grant.
I don't have the, that's, I thought somebody else was reading the declaration.
Oh, well, but you will explain.
Oh, okay.
She'll read the declaration.
Okay. Yes, well, as we know, Hurricane Dorian was out there in the Atlantic. On August 24th, we actually started watching it, and this preparations, we prepared as a city, and I will say, the city directors and everybody pulled together, the city as a whole, they came together, prepared, they took it serious, even up until Thursday, where we started seeing that the path was going out of our direction. Up until Thursday, we actually thought we were getting a direct hit with either a category two or even higher. And up until Thursday, Friday, it made its trend off towards the Atlantic and East Coast and started going where it is now. This, as you know, historically, is going to be one of the worst storms in history. It's the second strongest in the Atlantic, strongest to hit Bahamas, and it's breaking all sorts of records. So this declaration was in conjunction with the county, who declared theirs on Saturday at 9:00 AM, in preparations for us possibly getting a hit and what damage we could have taken or had with this storm coming in our area.
Any questions for staff on 9.21?
Just one, does it make sense to declare a state of emergency after the fact that we're not going to be, do we still need to do this?
The declaration of state of emergency is done by the manager, and then by code, you have to confirm it by resolution. So, and that happens at the first meeting after the emergency.
I got it.
So, so what you're actually doing is just doing a confirmation of the declaration...
About stating what he did.
Of what they did, yes.
Any other questions, counsel?
Do we need to approve the agenda item before the resolution, or just the resolution?
No, we'll do both.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody from, anybody from the public to speak to agenda item 9.21? Motion?
Approve agenda item 9.21.
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve agenda item 9.21. Commons, counsel, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Aiken.
Resolution number 19-30, a resolution of the city of Clearwater confirming a declaration of state of emergency, providing an effective date.
I move to adopt resolution 19-30.
Second. Motion's been made in second to adopt resolution 19-30. Commons, counsel. Again, thank you from all of us for all the work that the staff and you did, and thanks that we didn't have to worry about what happened to the rest of the country and to the Bahamas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item 9.22.
Provide direction on renaming the Bayfront Tennis Complex and Coachman Park to Coachman Commons. Mr. Del.
All right, Mayor, Counsel, Assistant City Manager Michael Delk, wanted to try to quickly kind of go through the process here. One thing I'll say about this is that, you know, typically, we will present this sort of thing publicly to you first. This situation is a little bit different in that regard, basically because of timing, my, my desire, and I think your desire, to move this project forward. Now, you know, once the concept that I'm going to talk about was kind of initially conceived by city staff, you all certainly were the first ones that, you know, we've had some individual comments about, but the, the reality of it is that we have had a couple, three public kind of discussions with this, with some of our constituents. I think there is, in this case, some unique benefit to that in that we have had a very positive response to this. So, and I think, you know, you all are more or less familiar with this, even though it's our first public presentation to you directly. So let me go through a little bit. This is, we're entering, we're transitioning from the Imagine Clearwater kind of theme of what we're doing, and we're getting ready to build and redevelop our park and our waterfront. So we're often referring to this project now as the Coachman Park redevelopment, and we're transitioning to an activated public space in the waterfront. And so this, this concept that we're going to talk about and this theme is, is kind of what we want to, with your approval, roll into the marketing and branding of this new great public place that we're developing. Imagine Clearwater, the vision is for this space, and I've taken this from the 2017 Master Plan, a waterfront that is active, authentic, iconic, civic, and open space. We want a space that celebrates the city's history, natural beauty, culture, and diversity, and anchors an economically vibrant downtown. We expect this and our other public spaces to be inclusive and accessible for all the citizens of our community, support social infrastructure, foster community connection. We want the 116,000-plus residents of our community to feel very vested in Coachman and the waterfront of downtown Clearwater. We want a park in an environment here consistent with ULI themes from the beginning, to be environmentally sustainable. And again, the theme common throughout this is, is our desire to drive economic development for downtown. We would ask for your consideration to authorize staff to take to the public, the citizens of our community, and ultimately to the park board for their consideration of renaming our waterfront Coachman Commons. Again, the desire here is to make it clear who we are constructing these parks and these improvements for, and that they have ownership and are invested in this waterfront as a community and, and the city. We want to result ultimately, what's driving us intentionally is to a vibrant, multi-use public park and arts destination, available to residents and visitors of our city year Coachman Commons, what, what would we like to achieve? An active, public space available 365 days a year with art, events, activations for residents and visitors alike. We want an authentic environment highlighting this unique assets of the city of Clearwater at the downtown waterfront, and a versatile destination. We want this to be an iconic place, providing a high-quality arts destination and public space that uses light, sound, and technology to immerse and engage visitors. We want it to be an open, connected sets of public spaces that impact this civic engagement, environmental sustainability, and economic development. We have unique areas and features of the park, and we want to highlight those. Commons, verbiage that equates to resources available for all members of a society and creates a shared language and a shared place, transitions the Imagine Clearwater initiative into a more concrete step as we move from planning to construction. This, we want to capture both the physical assets, like Coachman Park, the library, waterfront activities generally, but also the spirit of a shared civic space and public space that is available and accessible to everyone. Objectives, once again, reestablish public ownership and investment in the city's waterfront space, synergize and engage the community around a new concept for Coachman Commons. If you allow us to move forward, and if we are successful going through the process of engaging our community and the Parks Board, and coming back to you with a, with a renamed waterfront park, we will wrap this into our marketing of our, the bluff properties that we own and the theming, and really promote this waterfront, you know, as we prepare to put our bluff assets out there, these properties out there for potential development purposes. So having a real established vision and a theme and a branding to, to articulate to the development community, along with having an actionable or a construction site underway, can benefit us from a standpoint of creating value and interest in our, in our project. This is the current iteration of the master plan of the park. This is, I want to go through a couple of examples of what we're trying to create. This is the lake area, this is a more serene and kind of bucolic section of the park. One of the things that we are proposing is that we consider affording you all an opportunity to invite our sister city in Nagano this fall to commission architects on their behalf that can help design a component of the, the lake area of our park, to create a real tribute to our sister city and add a unique cultural flavor to, to the area along our waterfront. The, you know, pagoda is, you know, obviously an opportunity for something along that line. The garden on the upper right is actually a local garden, this is using Florida plant material that is fashioned in a way that appears to be of a Japanese garden type of environment. The, these are some examples of other activity items, the top right, use of candles, this is popular in the Japanese culture. The bottom right, a, a Japanese-style bridge. So there's, these are various elements that we can incorporate into our space. What we would like to do is to develop a park environment all the way from Drew Street to Pier Street, that is a lit up with, and composed of lights, sound, water, and we've even talked to Clearwater Gas about artistic installations using, using fire, and create a complete sensory kind of experience in the, in the park. This could be something that you could be on top of Memorial Causeway Bridge and look at from afar, or maybe the next trip is that you want to walk down through the middle of the park and experience the park being surrounded by, by the lights and sounds. I think one of the easiest things to picture would be during the holiday season, we I think one of the easiest things to picture would be during the holiday season, we could bathe the park in red, white, or red, green, and blue, and have holiday music throughout the park, or have carolers in sections of the park, have food trucks, really create and invent around this, this exciting and active space. Some other examples of how fire and lights have been utilized in other areas. We've, we've looked at concepts such as things like a bamboo light walk, where you have a forest of bamboo lights, you walk through the meandering paths, pathways of the park, and you experience a kind of an interesting area such as that. I think, you know, we're only limited by our imagination in the details that we can put in the park. Again, some other examples of both art and lighting, the upper right four-piece art installation, we have opportunity in our park to incorporate art as a part of that overall design. The bottom right picture, again, other representation of what kind of lighting creativity we can bring to the park. Water, certainly we anticipate having fountains in the park, those can be play fountains during the day, they can be visual artistic presentations at night. Couple of examples of that. Each, several areas of the park can have individual and exciting themes, again, other lighting examples of what we can do in various areas of the park. The pictures on the right here are from the city of Des Moines, Iowa, they've incorporated an art walk in a public park. So there are a number of ways and examples that we have of incorporating unique features into the park place, and we would like to take advantage of the tremendous opportunity we have in, in the Clearwater Commons for this kind of activation. If, for those of you who've been to Las Vegas, I'm sure you've seen people standing in front of the Bellagio Hotel, watching their, looking at their watch, waiting for the top of the hour when the Bellagio fountains light up, Andre Bocelli plays, and there's this exciting display of water and lights and sound. I think if you can envision something that we could be able to do here, very similar nature, we could do it as on-the-hour events at certain nights, we could, during the holidays, light the park from six to 10 or 11 on the weekends and have food trucks and carolers throughout, continuous. There's a number of ways that we could manage the park for active participation, promotion, sponsorships. You know, I think, again, imagination is our limit. If we make a decision later on to pursue a conservancy option for the park, this is the kind of programming, kind of approach that would very well lend itself to a conservancy type of issue where we, we ask citizens of our community really engage themselves in supporting and managing and, you know, programming the park for, in the public interest. I think my final comment is that we want to create a place, maybe it's that fourth day for the beach visitor. It's that place where if, if the residents of our community, they have relatives who come down from up north, we want this to be a place that say, before you get out of Clearwater, we have to take you down to Coachman Commons, we want you to see the city's waterfront. And we want them to come down here and spend time and enjoy the, the effort. This is something we can do 365 days a year. So with that, our current ask tonight is, let me, one last thing, we're, as you are well aware, we're working on the 30% plan stage with our consultant team at Stantec. We had a meeting with them last week. It is remarkable to me, the level of consistency in terms of their activation and design of the park relative to the concepts that staff have kind of generated to date. Very, very consistent themes along this, the park activation, and I would say that what I've shown you tonight really is only the tip of the iceberg of the kind of creative place that we can put together in, in the Coachman Commons in our waterfront park. The tip of the iceberg, there's some very unique things, we're going to be very engaged in, in that over the next several months. Again, finally, our ask is that if you support kind of where we are at this point, we would respectfully request that you consider taking through the process, which our Parks Department is going to manage for us. We met with them this morning over getting engaged in this, this part of the process as well as some, some design details, and they will process this for us with the Parks Board. We'll bring it back to you with a recommendation from them, and in the meantime, we will, we'll certainly give our community, citizens of Clearwater, a chance to, to weigh in as well. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, I, I know all of us find Mr. Delk's enthusiasm contagious and exciting for all of us, but let me focus you on what the ask is tonight. And all we're talking about tonight is whether or not we want to recommend to the park board whether it needs to consider changing the name to Coachman Commons. And when Mr. Delk first mentioned this to me, my first thought was, when you think of Boston, what do you think of? But Boston Commons, and how that is an iconic place for all the visitors. And I think that this is probably a very important decision for us to do, and hopefully the park board and the citizens will embrace that very much, because I think this will again lend itself to making the downtown park, the Coachman Commons, part of everybody's second neighborhood, and, and get that buy-in from the entire community. So your questions or, or direction, please just focus it on whether or not you would want Coachman Commons to be recommended. Mr. Pogly.
I'll start off. It's, I'll see if there's a question in there, but you'll see where I'm going with this at the end. It's a new park, there's universal expectations, massive amount of money. The definition helped me a lot, commons, civic destination doesn't limit it, that definition doesn't limit itself to just residents, citizens of Clearwater, tourists, out-of-towners, everybody. New park, I think it should have a new name, and for the reason that the mayor highlighted, Boston Common, I think it's, I think it's appropriate, and I think if we're going to market something brand-new with an incredible expectation upon this park to revive our downtown and create this, this wonderful place for everyone, I think a new name is appropriate, and I applaud you for coming up with it.
Mr. Cundoff.
Mr. Delk, are you, are you sure that if this is going to be an active and iconic open space, that we should not call it Coachman Uncommons?
It'll be Coachman Extraordinary.
Yeah. Mr. Albrecht.
I'll keep it short. New name, I think, can't wait to use it, because it really turns this, it gives Coachman Park, Imagine Clearwater, new energy, and that's, I think, what we need, so I'm for it.
And I would like to say, as much as I get sometimes, you know, I've had a lot of people give me positive remarks about this, I think, you know, Mr. Hubbard and Rosemary from, you know, CRA staff, and, you know, we have some very creative and talented people who I have to give a lot of credit to for turning this into a work of art.
Mr. Hamilton.
I guess, the, the Coachman Commons, I have no, no issue, I think it's fine. My, my other question relating to something you said is, my question is, when would you recommend, I, I agree on that, at some point in time, the establishment of a conservancy group to help with, you know, certain, certain aspects of this is, is a great move. The question is, when do we need to start putting that together?
Well, we're starting to have some very preliminary discussions on it right now. I think we're in a, in a period of time where we need to kind of work through administration-wise, the logistics of that, and how we're going to integrate it with the, what we're getting ready to build. We're going to have a number of major decisions come, that are going to have to come together very quickly. I don't want to wait to start marketing and branding our waterfront, because I want to use that in the RFP and the outreach that we're going to do to try to increase, you know, market our property. So, you know, I think over the next few months, we really, you know, I've, I've had some initial conversations with the Parks Department. We have to figure out how we're going to balance it. I mean, we're, we're preparing, designing right now a, a, what amounts to a, more or less a full-blown amphitheater in the middle of the park. So that's probably not something that we want to give to a conservancy to, to manage, that's probably not going to happen, or should. So, you know, there are some issues here, and we've talked about these, that we have to resolve in the near future. I think the park itself lends itself very well to a conservancy. I think the amphitheater thing is another matter, so dividing and responsibilities and management is something we, I think we really need to kind of talk through that administratively, and then, you know, when we're kind of comfortable with where we are, then bring that to you for some, a series of decisions that we're going to need you to make.
Go with comments of the park board.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Horn, do you have anything further for us? Ms. Aiken?
No, sir.
Mr. Pogly. 11.1.
Well, I had mentioned to you, in light of time, I would be willing to take this off the agenda to the next work session in September the...
Is that okay, council? Okay?
Because I'd really rather talk to everybody fresh.
Okay. 11-2, Mr. Albrecht.
Okay. I think at a work session, last work session, I believe, I brought forward a resolution that I thought would be a good thing to put forward, because it, it is, I've been getting a lot of emails, as well as probably I know a lot of you have, on safety concerns with small cell. It's went all the way back to the end of last year, I started getting people asking me about cell, the new 5G cell tower, so I had to really learn exactly what that was. And then I learned that really no, nothing the city can do about it, because it's, the state, the federal government, I mean, have left the cities out of it. But still, people have a concern about that as a health hazard, and so we've modified the resolution, I don't know if everybody has it in their package, but it just says that, basically, the city of Clearwater believes it's the best interest of the residents and visitors, as well as of all citizens, for the federal government to initiate a scientific review of the health and economic impact of 5G technology. And it just says, "The city of Clearwater urges the Congress of the United States to authorize and fund a federal study on the health impacts of small cell wireless and 5G technology and develop nationwide guidelines for the installation of such technology that will protect and serve the public and the nation if such study is found to impact adversely the public's well-being."
Not to impact.
If, if such study is found not, yes, to impact adversely the public's well-being. So I guess I'm asking today that we discuss this and see if this is something council would like to, to move forward.
Mr. Pogly.
Yeah, I've read this multiple, read the first iteration and here, and I've talked to city manager and all staff and city attorney, and it really doesn't have any teeth, but I think what's, what's really important to note is that it puts us on record that we at least requested the federal government, should something become of this, where it is a be-hazard, and at least we were on record to say that, look, we buy into the fact that more information could be given. It's, and there's a number of resolutions we could get behind coming up in the future. I think the mayor has one coming up. I have one coming up regarding the power companies. They don't have any teeth, but I think it's important to go on record to say, we're representing the citizens, and we think it's a good idea that you do this. Whether we have enough influence to actually make them do it, maybe enough municipalities creating resolutions may get them to do it, it's really trying to overcome the big lobbyists, whether it's a power company, whether it's a telephone communications company, we're just going on record. Those would be my comments. Thanks.
Mr. Cundoff.
I would agree with Mr. Pogly, I think, I think the important thing is to ask the government to do the study. And we can't force them to, but if, if we don't ask, they don't think we're concerned. We need to show that we are concerned.
I mean, I have no problem doing the resolution. Again, it's, it's a toothless resolution, because my understanding is, there have been, there have been studies, as they were developing 5G, there were studies done to determine whether or not there were health hazards, but there's always going to be an element and a portion of the population that thinks, you know, that, you know, we're, we're going to have to start wearing metal hats, tin hats, or something. And so, you know, like I said, this is a, you know, this is a feel-good that does basically nothing resolution, so I have no problem with it.
Well, I appreciate the rewrite, and yes, Mr. Pogly, there is something very much that weighs on me regarding gun control, highest, you know, assault weapons, high magazines, but I can't, you know, I can't make a motion, and I, I don't know where the rest of y'all stand on that, but I would love it if we went on record saying that we were opposed to, you know, assault rifles. There was an assault rifle ban back as, as far as 1999 that the Congress had approved. And, you know, since we had our last meeting, there was another incident, and I haven't heard of anybody dying from a 5G technology yet. So I would hope that y'all would consider, so that we could have that discussion at some point, but I wouldn't...
Is the mayor allowed to ask? That's not against sunshine law, right, asking other parts of us to do it? Because I'm in support of his comments at 100%.
You're in the sunshine.
Yeah, no, we're in the sunshine.
No, we're here, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're, we're in the sunshine. So, you know, if, if, if we want to go down that road, I'm there, because I think it's embarrassing that we, we put so much emphasis on, on, you know, CNBC, and I send it, I sent it to y'all, had the scientists discussing 5G technology, and they explained that they were both looking at the same information, and they came up with two different conclusions. And they explained that what they were, what 5G technology is compared to what actually causes it, it's night-and-day difference because of the wavelengths. But, you know, this is a whole lot better than what we had, and I, I will vote in, in favor of it also. Is there a motion, is there any, well, let me get a motion first to approve agenda item 12.1.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
There's a second, 12.2. Anybody from the public to speak to agenda item 12.2?
11.2.
11.2. I'm sorry, it's getting late. 11.2. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to approve agenda item 11.2. All in, comments? All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Aiken.
Resolution number 19-29, a resolution of the city of Clearwater, Florida, urging the federal government to conduct a definitive study of the health effects of 5G technology and to develop installation guidelines if necessary.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was going to be a little bit longer, so I was reading...
Move to approve resolution number 19...
Move to approve resolution number 19...
29.
29. I thought we had 1930 already.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to adopt resolution 19-29. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Again, council, thank you for your attention this evening. Staff, thank y'all for being here. Without a work session, our meeting was just a little longer, but I guess in the overall scheme of things, it wasn't really that much longer. So, closing comments, Mr. Hamilton.
I was going to make one last comment on the resolution we just passed, because we didn't give our honorary council member, who was also getting all the emails, a chance to chime in.
Widow.
Let me see her vote on it.
Mr. Albrecht.
I don't have any more to say.
Mr. Pogly.
Thank you very, I just extend a personal apology to Planning Director Gina Clayton, who came back to hear my item and, and represent state's position, but I pulled it in light of time, so we'll talk about it during the next work session.
Mr. Cundoff.
And I'm going to save my breath and your time.
Okay. Just a couple things. First off, thanks to our United States Coast Guard for responding as they have been, they've been in the Bahamas and really appreciate the work that they do. Our legislative delegation is going to be meeting at St. Pete College Clearwater Campus on September the 12th. Our legislative... Clearwater Campus on September the 12th. Our legislature convenes in January, so this is going to be the first meeting that the delegation is having in preparation for that session. Want to thank our Public Communications Department and our police and fire. I think for the last 10 years, counsel, the National Information Officers Association has had a training conference right here in Clearwater. It's the public information officers from all across the country and Canada who come here to Clearwater, and they've been doing this on a regular basis, so we appreciate that. Want to remind everybody that if you're thinking of becoming a candidate for office, you can pick up your cards for the election, which will be in March of 2012, on September the 17th. On September the 14th, Nova Southeast University is going to be opening up its osteopathic hospital college at the, on the campus off of Clearwater, Court Campbell Causeway, where Clearwater Christian College used to be. Obviously, throughout the year, or throughout the next couple of weeks, we're going to have sunsets at Pier 60. Clearwater swim lessons registration is going to be at the Long Center on the 14th, Make-A-Wish Fish, Make-A-Difference Fishing Tournament on the 14th at Clearwater Beach. And again, thank you for spending your evening with us tonight, and please be safe. Our next meeting will be a work session on September the 16th, and our council meeting will be on Thursday, September the 19th. We urge you. Thanks, guys. Yeah, no, considering, it wasn't bad.